This conference will now be recorded.
The United States of America, and it is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regularly, a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Friday, June 17, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. We'll start with the consent agenda, minutes of the Board of Supervisors regularly, regular meeting held May 20, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second. Are there any comments from the board on the minutes? I have, I have a couple. Okay. I mean, there were some errors here. I'm just going to point them out. On page three, for example, it says that the district submitted 10 items totaling a little bit over 1.5 million, the last item being $150,000, which they did not have, which they did not have the budget for, which you explained last time. That's really $950,000. So I don't know. I mean, on page four, and he's here today, Pat Holmes is Pat Humms. I mean, it's just little things that are not being reported correctly. On page eight, if you look at it, it's on the very bottom line, 250. It says, "Discussion was had regarding the golf membership newsletter." And then it says, "Per the organizational chart provided, there should be better management coverage." Well, what organizational chart are we talking about? I mean, I know, but if I was reading the minutes, I wouldn't know what they're talking about. It was the organizational chart from the rest, from Mike Lemire and his side with the restaurant. But reading this, you would never know it. Excuse me. I mean, on page nine, there was no mention when we're talking here about the restaurant and the restaurant hours and the coverage from a manager's standpoint. There was no mention here whatsoever that we decided or agreed to that there would be management coverage in the restaurant up to one hour after the kitchen closes. Looking at these notes, you would never know that. And that was probably one of the most important things that we decided that day. So they're just little things, and that's it. I mean, they're not going to make or break the world or change the world, but we're not necessarily reporting accurate information. So I think they may need to check themselves. This is InfraMark doing that?
Yes.
Is that correct? They may need to check themselves. Because it's, you know, we just can't accept bad information. Again, if I'm somebody who does not attend a meeting or listen to the meeting and wants to read the notes to see what's going on, they have to be as accurate as possible so they know, so I can understand, or that person can understand what's going on. So if you get them to work on it, that would be great. And that's all I have. Are there any public comments on the Board of Supervisors, on the minutes? Okay.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hold on. Are we going to, we're going to correct those minutes?
Well, we can make changes to them. And again, part of it, there were a couple errors on the names and that number, and we'll, we'll make sure we correct it. And some of it's summary, you know, we go so far, but we don't take it any further than about 15 pages.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And we do have a timestamp.
I just recommend somehow, whoever's looking at that, we've had this for a week. And we bring it up at the meeting, and it probably shouldn't, I mean, it should be corrected before and just go on.
Okay.
I mean, this, this is what makes the meetings a lot longer. So somehow we got to figure out that this doesn't have to keep coming up.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Burks?
Yes. Okay, we're at the point in the meeting, public comment or anything relating to not something on our list to be discussed during this morning's meeting. Anybody? State your name and...
I'm Pat Holmes, resident. I want to thank Mr. Schumacher and the board and anybody else that was involved in the drainage problem we had at Pink Palace and going west on the Kansas. They went above and beyond the call of duty on this. They have to put rocks in to stop erosion. They dug it all out. They put in sod, and it looks beautiful since it's been done. It's just been completed. But I wanted to thank you very much for all your endeavors and what you have done. Second thing, I was walking this morning, and over on Granada, there's a white truck that's parked on the north, or I'm sorry, on the, yes, on the north side of Granada. It's been parked there for about a week now. It's over the sidewalk. And this morning I was walking, and there was a car parked right in the middle of the sidewalk. No driveway, but parked right in the middle of the sidewalk. A lot of dew on it, so you know it was there all night. This is a complete violation of what we have here in Sunland Lake, and I think we should take a look at it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your positive comments of pointing out our problem. We'll have, we'll check out that car after the meeting.
And we'll field test the drainage improvement tomorrow during the rain event.
Yeah. Any other public comments? All righty. Scott Corrick is not going to be able to attend this morning's meeting. So we will go on. Let's, let's, before we get into the facilities plan on the action agenda, let me call up Jeff Cathy. He's the agronomist for Trune Golf. And let's hear his comments, and then we'll get into the other details.
Morning, everyone. Thank you again for having me back today. I appreciate that. It's great to be back in this time of year when you start getting the change in weather patterns. The, the change in turf conditions has been pretty immense in the past few weeks. I think it was five weeks ago I was last here, and it was four weeks prior to that. So those are my past three visits now. They've healed in fantastically. I think we're making great progress. Jimmy's doing a fantastic job with his team out there. You know, on to the cultural practices that he's doing. I know it can seem extensive, especially if you're not used to seeing that. But through this process, we were able to do a lot of different testing evaluations internal, you know, looking internally, what can we do to improve and make sure this doesn't happen again. And, you know, that's part of those cultural practices is instrumental in improving health on the greens. It's instrumental that we continue to have good porosity, which is being able to get water off the surface. I don't know if any of you witnessed, and we haven't had a lot of rain recently, but previously, if we'd get any amount of rain, any amount of irrigation, the water would puddle on them. And that was one of the things we knew we had to improve and get better at. So the, the aerifications, getting those sand channels, allowing the water and air oxygen to get into those profiles has been, has been critical. The root structure on the turf has improved dramatically. You have just a much healthier plant. And looking forward into the 22, 23 budget, that's, you know, one area that we've looked at is making sure from a fungicide standpoint, we have good program. Jimmy's laid out a great program, better coverage, more consistent coverage through next year, so we'll make sure we're on top of it. But I think just improving turf health in general as well, which is going back to the essential cultural practices that you have to do with aerification, top dressing, vertic cutting, is, is going to, to help immensely in that regard as well. Any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
In regards to the collars, at one time, we talked about cutting them down. Is that still needed, or is the aerification taking care of it now, in your opinion, or?
Well, no, it's a, it's a, you have to do both. And I think the, the more essential one was take care of the grass on the green itself. So let's start there and do that. The collar, what we call sand dams, you know, where you get the ridge on the outside of them, which is what you're referring to, it's a more labor intensive, and we do have some options for that. But I think the focus with the current staff that he has was, let's put everything we have into the greens. We need to get him recovered, obviously, first, right? Let's get the turf health. Let's do what we need to do culturally so we make sure we're ahead of this into the future. And then if time allows this summer, I know Jimmy's going to work on some of the most prolific ones, like nine deer.
But if we don't eliminate the collars, aren't we asking for the fungus again next year?
Again, it's...
My understanding, that was one of the big reasons why we had so much fungus, is because the water pooled, and most of that was because of the dam, the collard dam.
That was a, was a definitely a key contributor, but if we're doing the work on the greens. So we did some testing, and some of that testing came back that we were moving about an inch an hour. So typical soil profile on a green is going to move anywhere from 25, 30 inches an hour. We were down to an inch, right? That's just something we had to, to, to plan for. And that's part of his program that he's put in place was to address that. If we can get that up to seven, eight, nine inches, then that's going to help that pulling issue. It's not going to eliminate it altogether. And again, that's why it's critical to get to that. But I think the most important part is, let's improve the infiltration on the green surfaces themselves, and then let's go to step two. And step two would be getting those collars. I feel pretty confident that Jimmy will be able to get a few of those this summer. I just don't want to commit to how many and to what, what quantity we get to it. But looking at the ones that were the worst, I think nine, you know, that's where you start. Nine, nine deer, right? You start there, and then you work out from the worst areas from there and get as much as you can this summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I have a question. The, the report that Jim sent out about his plans for dealing with the golf course and, you know, whether he's going to plug, whatever he's doing on the golf course over the next nine or 10 months. Have you seen that?
Yes, I have it right here.
Okay. I just need you to reaffirm to us that you're okay with that? You think it's the right plan? And you're go.
Yes, sir. I think it's a great plan. I think it's the appropriate actions to take, given what happened this, this winter. And I'm full agreement in what he's laid out here.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public questions?
Sorry. Bono Cross, resident. I have a question on money and possible shortages in fertilizer because of the inflation, the supply, and the whole works. How do we stand as far as getting the necessary fertilizer? What do you see as a problem? And I hope you do the best you can.
I think every industry, right, is feeling this pinch. Every, everyone's feeling the same thing. Jimmy is excellent at taking the resources he has and finding a way to work within those resources. Would it be good to have more money, a higher budget? Absolutely. I could go to the best property we have and, you know, with a budget three or four times what you're spending here, and they could come back and say, yeah, we need more money, right? Everyone is kind of always tending towards asking for more money. But I think, given the resources allotted to Jimmy, I think he's done a fantastic job. My first visit was last summer, and just the difference from when he kind of, that's basically when he started, from that point, looking to where we are now, there's, there's been significant changes. You know, weed reduction has, has been significant. Turf health overall, I know, doesn't seem that way, given what we had on the greens, but I think turf health, when you look at the fairways density is getting there. It's not there yet. There's still a long ways to go. You know, our biggest critics ourselves, Jimmy is his biggest critic, right? So I know he still has a long ways to go to get where he wants to have the product for you. I don't know if that answers your question. I think you have to work with the resources you have and find some areas where you can shuffle things around as needed to do this.
Are you anticipating shortage of...
Actually, in the industry? Right now, we're not seeing any signs to shortages in the industry.
Right.
The price, the prices across the board on everything have, have increased significantly. Yep. But that's where, I'll, I'll just add to that, there's certain programs in place where you can do some bulk ordering. I know Jimmy took advantage of that, as a lot of our superintendents do. And I think you keep a pulse on the industry and know exactly where we're at. And when those happen, you usually have, can get out front of that and maybe get some product ahead if you know you're going to have some issues.
Do you level a backup supply chain?
No. Short answer is no. No, that's where, again, that goes back to staying on top of the industry, listening to what people are telling you, knowing that, okay, we're going to have some issues down the road with the chemical, with a certain chemical, a certain fertilizer, you know ahead of time. We actually have another property in, on the East Coast here that they went ahead and just ordered about $50,000 worth of fertilizer. It was a municipal course, and they were like, hey, we're going to have a shortfall in this. Not to mention the shortfall, the cost is going up significantly in the next six months. We're better off just buying what we need now and having to just put in storage, so we have it ahead of time. So I mean, that's, those are the things that Jimmy's working with, to making sure he's staying on top of.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, wastewater and stormwater facilities plan, that would be you, Chris.
Sure. And I'll ask Drew to get up and make a few remarks about that. What we put in the board packet today was the draft plan, and it's been revised since then. We're getting ready to finalize that plan, and we'll bring it to the board as a formal for consideration at the next meeting. At that time, we'll ask the board to set a public hearing. We'll advertise that hearing and take public comment on it, make any final adjustments. And at that point, it's sent off to the FDEP. They, they review it and then put it in their queue for funding in August for consideration. So there's, financially, we're probably looking at potential borrowing up to $6 million in there total. And we're working right now on the financing plan that they require. They ask you for your last two years audits, your financial statements, and we're pulling that together to submit at the same time. But next step will be a formal consideration, public hearing, and approval by the board to accept it by resolution and send it to the DEP.
Well, we should decide today what we want to do, correct?
Oh, if you'd like to make some comments on that.
So it can be presented at the public meeting?
Yes, sir. And then, and at that, we can make comments too, from the board and the public. And that has to be advertised, and the board has to approve a resolution from the board for DEP to accept it.
Okay.
The, the $6 million, that, that's strictly stormwater, right?
Strictly. And, and that's up to $6 million, and you'll have a shot at it too, because nothing's final until the DEP approves it and they send you back the agreement. And if you want to make changes or say, you know, well, we changed our mind, we only want to borrow $3 million, or we want to borrow $7 million.
Well, there's, there's a couple of proposals in here, so let's hear what they are, and let's try and decide on which one we want to recommend.
Drew, posted engineering. On sheet 21 is the, I guess, the main, it's the development alternatives. As part of the facilities plan, we have to supply three different alternates, a minimum of three different alternates. One of them can be do nothing. The next two can be options, like if you, like, one can be like do everything, the other one can be reduce scope. And some of these, most of these are reduce scope and not do everything, because our, our do everything, when we originally put it together, was even if the pipe wasn't bad, we were, it's the same age as the other ones that have failed. So we were going to, we got pricing, or whatever, estimated to replace all of it, which, that was like that $10.5 million estimate, if y'all ever saw that one. And we decided to cut it back as far as we could and still accomplish bringing everything back up to like swift mud standards, basic maintenance, keep the road safe. And pretty much, they're split into, I believe it's four different subcategories or project areas. If you get a chance to review it, I don't know if you've looked at it much. One of them's the stormwater discharge structures. The other one's the culverts, mainly the ones that are crossing the road. The next one was cleaning the major ditches. And then the final one is the stormwater pond cleaning. And each one of those, we, we gave the three options of do nothing, do everything, and do a reduced scope. In the document, which, which you see is highlighted, those are the, those are pretty much the options at the end on what we decide to do. I put what I would recommend and what we kind of, staff kind of went over back when we were at the early stages of what we wanted to accomplish, and then following the reduced scope. That's the recommendation I wrote into it. None of that set in stone. That's something that I guess you and the board and staff need to come up with, whatever you want to do at the end of the day, which we can decide on that now. But if you want to, I don't know where y'all want to start, if you want to, if you want to briefly read over them, if we want to, if we want to start at the, the beginning.
Let's go to page 21.
Okay.
4.1, take each of the options as they are and get a consensus on which one we want to do.
Okay.
I assume everybody's prepared to do that, correct? Take them one by one. Let's see what we got. Do we have, we, we don't have to do a formal vote on this, right? We're just...
No, this is a draft plan, and then we'd come back with a final plan for the board again can comment on it, and the public can comment on it. So we're just taking this from draft to a final draft.
All right. Let's see if we can make a decision. Take them one by one.
Okay. First one is the stormwater discharge structures. So that's primarily all of the pond structures that are damaged. So it'd be, I don't know if you've seen any of them or pictures of them, but we've, we've repaired a number of them already. But usually, they're fairly large, and they control the, the water that leaves the pond after it gets there. And there's usually metal or fiberglass skimmers that keep all the logs and big leaves and stuff on the top from floating out. We have a mix of issues. Some of them, the structures have failed, and some of them, just the skimmers were, I don't want to call them poorly designed, but they weren't, they weren't designed as well as they could have been, that have failed just due to, they were not as substantial as they may, may have needed to be. So they're either missing or damaged, so they're not functioning. And our, and our options, of course, the first one I have on all of them is take, take no action, just to leave it. And then, in that case, we would just address it in our yearly budget. So that would be, that wouldn't be something we want to do if we're going to take the money.
For the stormwater discharge structures, you're recommending which of the three?
I'm recommending replace, repair, replace all of the damaged structures. So number two.
You're recommending number two?
Correct. And that, that kind of reflects, or should reflect what we have in our proposed estimate of the $5.5 to $6 million.
Does anybody here have a problem with number two, or would you like to see something else?
Drew is fine with me.
No, I'm good.
Okay, we'll go with number two.
Okay.
Next one.
This one is the stormwater culverts. The first one, of course, is no action, but the description of the culverts are the failed, if you've driven out back where the road is dipped. Even if you haven't driven all the roads, there's a lot of roads that the culverts are sinking. There's various reasons that we believe that happened. Some of them are the culverts have settled on one part and have damaged like the, the bell ends or the, the mating ends of the culvert. Some of them, we don't know if they de-watered properly when they were originally installed. So the fix is to dig them back up and just for, just to keep us covered when we do the work, we're proposing to re-bed everything and replace the pipes, put new miters, rebuild the road surface that we tear up.
So which number are you recommending here?
I'm recommending replacing all of the damaged culverts. Also, the, the other option we would leave, number three, would leave some damaged culverts in the roads. To me, I think we're leaving ourselves up to some liability issues if we do not address them, since we know about them, and someone runs off the road. If we don't close the road, I don't know what our legal standpoint from closing a road that doesn't have any homes on it, or...
Or at least notify us that the dip, because I've driven out there, and there are some significant dips. You could, a vehicle could easily get damaged.
Yeah, if you're driving the speed limit and you don't have like a, a giant truck, you, you're going to scrape bottom on a lot of them, so.
So you're recommending number two?
Correct.
Anybody have a problem with number two?
No.
Okay. Next one.
This is the stormwater ditches. We have, while we were working on this to get our budget back down to the $5.5 to $6 million figure, we have reduced the scope even on option number two, down to the main ditches. So mostly, those are the ones that run east, or east to west in the Western Basin. We took out many of the, the smaller tributary ditches, if you want to call it that, that run north and south, just because they were, that's part of the reason our budget was getting closer to $10 million as well. I'm not saying we need to ignore them completely, but at this time, I don't recommend spending that much money just to, just to repair some of the ditches that were... It's up to you to decide that, but we were asked to reduce funds, so that's, that's what we decided to cut out. So that's why, that's, that's what option two is in this, this scenario.
Here's, here's my, my question at the end of all this, is after you, after we get done with this, and you give us a number, I'm going to then say to you, okay, are we in good enough position that if we budget, what did we budget, 200, 200, 300,000 a year?
Annually, yes.
Annually, are we okay? Are we going to run into another problem? That's the whole key. We're, we're trying to play catch-up.
Right.
To where we get out and at least are equal with it and address problems as they come along. I don't want to have to play catch-up again.
We're, that's a little bit of a crystal ball thing, if we...
Well, you're my crystal ball.
Yeah. If, if you want to remove all doubt, you throw all the money at it and do all of it. But I was...
If it's 300,000 a year after this, going to be enough to keep us out of trouble and...
For our regular, for our regular budget, our normal work, yearly work we've always been doing, it should be fine, because we, we can tackle those other ditches as time goes on. A lot of this, which I hate to say this, because you don't know what, what development's going to do, a lot of these areas, we don't have homes yet. That's why we cut out the ditches running north and south, because most of those, they're not, they're not main ditches. We're not taking flow from like unit 16 and running it out west through those. That's why we cut, that's why I decided to cut those. They're not, they're not high priority.
You're comfortable with my statement? You're the guy, I got nobody else to ask.
We're, I, I don't know, I, I don't think we'll have any more issues than we already do now if we leave those alone, those particular areas. We're not, I don't think we're experiencing flooding, but it's all undeveloped and it's all really low-lying areas.
I know. Something can always come up.
Right.
There could be another hailstorm next week. I understand all that, but based on what you know today, will this put us in good shape? And if we budget 300,000, we're good.
It will get us in good shape for making sure everything is still making it to the ponds.
Okay. On this one, on the storm ditches, which of the three are you recommending?
What number? Also, number two. The, number three would be even reduce scope from what I told you, which I don't, I don't recommend reducing the scope anymore.
Okay. Number two. Anybody got disagreements?
I'd like to know the difference between number two and number three, dollar-wise. Because it seems like number three would be the better option, if you had the budget.
Number three, number three is a, it's a further reduce... Number two is cleaning everything that we had in the original budget. Number three is even reduce scope?
It says, but this brings the largest cost to add to the project.
Okay, you're on...
Page 23.
Can I flip over? I was staying on the main front page.
Page 23?
Mm-hmm. The difference between stormwater ditches and 4.53?
Joe?
Oh, I think I have those transposed. I do apologize for that. I was looking at the other page.
So which is which?
I, let me, let me, let me get back to you on that. I do believe, I do believe that, I'll have to go back and check the numbers. Let me, let me check that real quick.
So that one, you're going to, you're not sure if it's two or three at this point that you're recommending?
Let me just verify the scope real quick.
That's fine.
Okay, I think, I think, I think we're correct. I think you're correct on the number, option three would be the additional north and south ditches. That's, that's their, I think that was the original, like $10 million scope. I'll verify that when I get back to the office, but I believe that's the original I'll verify that when I get back to the office, but I believe that's the original part of the original 10 million dollar scope. Our option two is the reduced main ditches.
So, you're still recommending two?
Yeah, that's, that was my original discussion with you.
Okay. We're okay? What do you want them to price in, three?
That question would be the difference between the two costs, because if we're going to have to do it again in two years...
All right, can, when we, let's assume that we have no other pricing issues. Once you price out what we decide today, can you then price it out to Bev's point with that other?
Right, I can, I can do that. I just need to, I need to create the right scenario in my spreadsheet.
That's fine.
To cut out the other things and add in.
We'll get a price today, then we'll have another price that we can entertain based on this. Okay, everybody all right with that?
Yes.
So, it's two, maybe going to be three, we'll find out.
But three is actually... It says cleaning, it says cleaning other major ditches on page 23 is number two, but over here...
That's where I have it transposed, I need to correct that.
Is identified as number three.
Correct, I have, I need to correct those.
Are what we want.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
And that's what you're recommending.
Right, I had it transposed on the summary sheet, I do apologize.
So, then what we're saying is we really, we prefer on the stormwater ditches, number three, not number two. Is that correct?
Correct, because it's...
On the, on the front...
23, it says it is number two.
Yeah, I have, I have them reversed on page 21 on the scenario.
Okay. So, we're looking at number three on that one.
Right, okay, I like that.
Okay, stormwater ponds. All right, last one.
That's, that would be, the main focus of that are the ditches in the western basin. I don't know if you had a chance to look. That's the approaching Balboa. A lot of those ponds, they're, I don't know, I don't know the official maintenance program that's happening with them, but a lot of them have overgrown around the structures and we have a lot of trees growing in and around the berms. I know they do mow the berms, but I know it's hard to do anything more than that when you have pine trees and everything else growing. So, part of this project would be cleaning around the perimeter of the ponds with the option of, with the option of cleaning the key flow areas, which would be around the structures. We've have, we have a number of structures that are very close and around wetlands that it's hard to get the regular machinery that we have in and out of there with the level of, that it's overgrown. I know we're trying to stay on top of that with some of the new equipment we're getting. But our options would be to take no action. Option two would be to clean out everything we can around the pond and structures. And option three would just be the key flow areas. That's where like the inflow ditches coming into it, clean out around, so we're not causing a backup right at the pond and then clean up around the discharge structure. So, we get all the vegetation around all of the discharge structures on the selected pond.
On that one, you're recommending which number?
Number two, we'd clean out all exotics we can out of the ponds.
All right. Everybody, everybody all right with that? So, right now, we've got a two, two, maybe a three, and then a two, if you run them down.
Correct.
Is, do we, I know there's two prices in here, right?
Correct.
Can you, one was for like 5 million dollars and one was closer to 6 million, correct?
Correct.
Can you summarize briefly what the difference is between the two of them, Forrest?
Let me go over it real quick. I believe appendix A should be our, was, was my, or my listed and I believe what we selected as our options, our recommended options to do. That should have been the, yeah, the total of five and a half million.
So, what we basically picked out would be 5.5 million?
Correct, well, I need to, that's the one I need to verify whether or not we're doing all of the ditch cleaning or not, or the main ditches.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we'll have to...
So, if we did all number twos, instead of, we're not sure about that number three, it would be 5.5 million?
Correct, that would be the recommended.
And if we did anything that cost more, we get up, what is the 6 million? Is that like the Cadillac of all areas?
No, it's not the Cadillac. I believe I added, I believe it's extra. If you look on like sheet 36 at the end, if you see, there's a lot of additional ditch cleaning. I don't know if that's all of the ditch cleaning for everywhere, but that's, I think that's the added, I think that's about 500,000 dollars for a lot of the additional ditch cleaning that we cut out, that we cut out of the first option. I think that's the difference like you asked for. I will verify that, but I believe that's the difference between all of the ditch cleaning versus the reduced main ditches.
So, we're talking 500,000?
Roughly.
That's when it details.
So, that you think, our number, the option for some stormwater ditches, what you're saying is if you went with the more expensive, it would raise everything up 500,000. That's what gets you to the 6 million, just that one issue?
Yes.
So, what we have to decide is, if that's true, do we want to go to 6 million or do we want to stay at 5.5? Correct?
Correct, and that's, at this point in time, from what I understand on how the loan and everything works, even if y'all decided to go with the larger amount, when everything comes in, when bids come in, when we get closer to it, for some reason, you don't want to take that whole 6 million dollars and you want to reduce the scope, we could go back and pick the other option. I believe when we put out the RFP documents, we're going to have a lot of bid options in this to make sure we don't like go to the moon, because by the time this all gets put out, we don't want to like...
Well, if possible, I would like for the board to decide a number that we don't exceed.
That would, that would be a good idea.
I like the 6 million because I want it done correctly and not have to be talking about this in two years.
Correct. Bev goes for six. What do you think?
What? Why is unit 11 so much more expensive than, I know there's more lots identified than there is in unit 16, but it's just a big jump for, it doesn't look like there's that much.
I think, I think a lot of it is the actual length of ditch that you're, it's, I think we got a lot, a lot more, a lot more distance where we're doing work over.
Okay.
Is the biggest thing.
Yeah, I can see that.
What do you think? Bev says no more than six.
Six.
Michael?
Yeah, it doesn't, we can change it, so we can do it at six if you want to start there.
For our purposes, we're deciding that we don't want to spend more than 6 million dollars.
Yeah.
If that's what we agree.
Yeah, for now, you know.
No, not for now.
Well, we can, you can put that as your limit and we can make sure we stay under that or we can even kind of back once bids come in.
I'm just saying the top level, if it comes in lower, that's fine. But I don't, what we're saying is we don't want to spend more than 6 million dollars or attempt to spend more, borrow more than 6 million dollars for this. We all in agreement on that?
And this is based on the best knowledge that we have of the type of costs that we would see.
Correct, and we do have, we do have a, well, I think it's substantial contingency, but I don't want to underestimate anything at this point. Let's include it in it. We have a 10% on the 6 million dollar contingency.
Drew, when you get, when you get a chance, the number four, the ditches and ponds, if you ever get a chance, give me a call and I'm not familiar with that, the rest I am.
Okay.
I'd like you to show me that. I mean, I'm in favor of it, but I just would like to, like to know. And thank you for this, this was pretty detailed. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, we're saying for the public meeting, we're going to state that the board has decided not to exceed 6 million dollars. And I guess we're going to present each of these, what we've decided on. We're going to, you decide how to, right? We're going to decide.
Yeah.
Show them what we, the board has decided and say it's not going to exceed 6 million dollars. And then I guess we have to say this is how we plan to pay.
We'll bring the final report, final draft report to the board for the public hearing with those numbers, get the public comment, get the board comment, and the board passes the resolution to convey that report.
Through the process of filing, and hearing back and hopefully have a decision by, what, September?
September, August will be the funding meeting.
And the intention would be to start preliminary drawings and everything?
January.
January.
Yep.
How long do you think this project would take?
Construction or design?
Well, once we start, once the design and everything's put to bed, the actual doing it.
It probably depends a lot on the contractor, but I, I know we gave it two years, but I would think it'd probably take every bit of that to get everything done. But if, depending on the contractor and depending on what else is going on with their workload, if they can put all their force at it, you could probably get it done in under a year. But that might be pushing, but I think we at least need to expect two years. Yeah, somewhere around there.
How long does it design?
I would probably say three to six months, just to make sure we have enough time, because some of this, we're going to need to get surveying. Surveyors are, depending on which one you call, usually a few months to get them even out to do the fieldwork. And this could be a little more extensive just because it's a lot of potential areas. We want to make sure we get some of the key areas surveyed in, so we're not doing work outside of our easements or at least reduce as much impact we can to any. The good thing is there's not a whole lot of houses where we're doing work yet, but there are some, are some locations that have homes. But we want to make sure whatever we're doing is within our easements and we're not encroaching.
Well, the drawing, the money to do the drawings and everything is in next year's budget.
Yeah.
Right, so we're not starting before then anyway, I don't think.
And this is a 10-year loan?
20.
20-year?
Yes, sir, and with that construction part, typically you don't want the contractors working in the rainy season, so you're pulling five or four or five months, a year out of that 12 months, because then they're into dewatering and real expensive working conditions. So, you try to get them out there working in the dry seasons.
Then that, that might be something we can negotiate with the contractor as long as we leave that in the RFP documents, that they might be able to give us a break or something if we give them more time.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Drew? Any public comments? All right, thank you, Drew, you did a good job on this report.
Thank you.
Very good, very detailed.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Okay. Add-on items? I assume petitions and communications? None. General counsel report?
I don't have a whole lot. The Avanti suit, the, the, the hearing we talked about at the last board meeting has been scheduled for June 21st. So, unfortunately, our next meeting is June 17th, so there still won't be an update, but that's where the hearing is scheduled for. I did get a communication from Mr. Hornick's attorney about the unit 12. There's some, it's not really a big, a big deal, but there's some potential title issues that they have recognized way back when. Hold on, let me pull this up. There was a company, when the, after the district was created, there was a company that came in that was called the GH Crawford Financial Services. GH Crawford Financial Services still has a, you know, there's some title issues and unfortunately, there's only one remaining person that can execute any documents on behalf of that entity. He's elderly, so we're, they have requested that I send a letter to him, basically asking for a blanket release for the entirety of unit 12. And so, I just wanted to bring that up to the board to make sure the board doesn't have any issues with me reaching out and getting that, you know, resolved or attempting to get that resolved on behalf of Mr. Hornick.
Any problems?
No.
You're good.
So, I'll get that, I'll get that taken care of. Hopefully, we can, he's still liable to execute that because I know he's in his mid to late 70s, I believe. Other than that, I don't think there's anything, I don't have any updates unless there's questions.
Any questions? Any public comments? General managers' report. Thank you, David.
Yes, sir. Sure, I have a few things. Hailstorm damage claim, all the field work's been done with the adjusters on the vehicles and also on the buildings, and we expect in the next two or three weeks to have that, those claims resolved and how much their projected payout is for each of those damage items. And at that point, it'll come to starting to fix things and we can put that work out to bid or we could hire contractors for the amount the insurance company's going to pay us to fix the items, which is the way a lot of them are doing business. Obviously, putting it out to bid's going to add 60, 90 days for sure to that process. But when we get the actual numbers, if a lot of the damage claims like for roofs and things like that are under the mandatory bid or under 100,000, we bring them to the board and say, here's some contractors that'll do it. Yeah, let's get it fixed. But until I have those actual dollar amounts in, I won't know. We went to some extensive work with satellite photography, drone image, then the adjusters came in and walked each building, got up on the buildings, you know, went in detail and there was quite a bit of damage.
Do we have any, I mean, the rainy season's coming up, are we in jeopardy of having any problems?
Well, nothing's leaking right now and a lot of the, a lot of the damage, you know, they're looking at what it did to the subsurface that could leave it open for some damage. Right now, we, with the rains we had, we don't have any leaks in any of the buildings, but if you leave that unrepaired for a year or two, it could turn into a real problem, especially with the sub base on the roofs, like the metal roofs. And we want to get them fixed, but I can, we'll bring you that dollar amount and I don't even have their estimates right now. But that whole side of the equation's done and the next equation will be bringing the damage claims and the amounts and how the board wants to proceed. If you want to put them out to bid or if you want to suspend your normal bidding practices and we just start trying to hire people, that, it's hard to hire roofers right now too.
Okay.
And we want to get it fixed. Of course, mentioned the Pink Palace work, tennis gate access control, that's been repaired. With the ARPA funding, we're moving forward with that 600,000 dollars, nine separate projects agreements. Those will come to the board, hopefully at the next meeting to approve. The money has to be spent in the 24, 25 calendar years, but we hope to address all that next year. And we're already kind of on the ground. We had a meeting with Drew and the representative from Thompson Pumps, and Joey and myself to talk about what they needed to do for the equipment, the backup pumps for the hospital, the nursing homes and the schools that were included in that ARPA funding. They require things like drawdown tests of the wet wells and pressure and a lot of that Drew's, Drew already has, they conducted those tests. So, we're hitting the ground running and getting some cost figures coming forward. And Joey also had a meeting yesterday with a couple of contractors because we had some improvements in water quality on that funding for chlorine injection, aeration trays, a tank mixer to improve our water quality. Several years ago, they upgraded a lot of the PLCs and the equipment there at the water storage tanks, but some of that ancillary equipment, they didn't address. And there used to be aerator trays on the top of those tanks and somehow a few years ago, they were taken out for cleaning and disappeared. They're actually in our permit to have them in there and we want to replace them, so. But we're going to hit the ground running and already had discussion with the contractors and when you, when you make some changes to the injection points and put the mixer in and get this, it greatly improves the water quality that we're sending out into the system. And Joey and I also had a meeting with the hospital folks on some water quality concerns and issues they had and it's really on their property, but we're just trying to help them out and we're going to put one of the auto flushers on the backside, but we're working with them on some check valves and water flows internal to the system where they had low chlorine residuals, but the water's going into buildings that they're basically using for storage. So, the only water going through is toilets getting flushed and, you know, when they open sinks. But we're working with them and we're trying to do everything we can just to be a good neighbor. Facilities plan, talked about the stormwater day. We're still waiting on the wastewater plan from the Florida Water Association. I hope to have that in the next two weeks. It'll follow the same path that the stormwater is. The only difference is, is the loan repayment for that will come directly from the enterprise fund. It doesn't encumber the general fund for that type of loan. So, we'll be bringing that forward with the finances also. AC unit, we're moving forward on that, it's a little problematic. The unit is seven to 10 weeks out. We asked them if we could find an alternative that we could get sooner. We checked, we couldn't. The unit's been ordered and we may actually get rent or configure a temporary unit to use in the kitchen because they're literally getting like heat rash from working in there when they're close to, close to that kitchen equipment. Well, I'm, I'm working on it right now.
What's that?
So, we're going to rent something even?
Beverly, I can't hear you, you got to speak into the mic.
I'll bring it a little closer.
She's not even close.
But we're... Okay, on the, on the, the AC unit, the question I would have is, when we start to install it, are we going to have a problem with keeping the kitchen open?
No.
Okay.
No, because right now, they're not getting any of the air and they're, they're basically just going to be going to the ductwork, so they're going to extend it, do all the electrical, just do some of the minor roofing repairs for that and then they'll just connect it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah, so there won't be any downtime in the kitchen, but we're, we are looking closely and I think the cost is going to be very low to get a portable unit in there, even if we have to bring one into the kitchen. even if we have to bring one into the kitchen itself to get some cool air in there, because if you go in on a hot day, it's warm in there, it's like working in a bakery.
It's only been that way for three years.
Yeah. Well, and the fellow that put up with it isn't here anymore, and I think he, he didn't mind, but everyone else did.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have today.
Any questions? I, I'd like to have an update, do we have an update on the Florida Avenue main break? What happened on Florida Avenue, what we talked about last meeting? Is there any update at all? We talked about fixing it, it might cost somewhere around a hundred, some, some odd thousand dollars?
The piping there? Yeah, we're just looking at making some plans for a total replacement, and we'll just bring it forward when we have some hard numbers.
But that's not in the budget at this point in time?
No.
And that would have to go into the budget?
Yes.
And that's approximately a hundred and twenty thousand?
Well, it could be, it could be up to a hundred and twenty thousand, I'm trying to get a hard number on it, that length of pipe, and I said a hundred thousand, that's, you know, the excavation and dewatering, we might be able to do it during the dry season, you know, in a less expensive route.
Are we looking to put that into the budget, or to do it for next year, or consider it, I should say?
We're considering it, but we could also do that under our regular operations, if you look at the amount of money we have in there for pipe fixing, we can cover it in that.
You must have a lot of money that I don't know about, okay, we'll, we'll look at it when we get the capital, I guess. I thought, oh, recycle bins, have you gotten anywhere with that?
No, Scott brought that up at the last meeting, and, and they're working right now to get, you know, a date when the company's going to come pick them up, and we're going to hurt them all together.
So we haven't heard back from Scott on that?
No.
We need, we need for him to get back to us, I'd like to have it completed by the end of June, if possible, for those, at least those residents who are still here. Any other questions for Chris? Any public comments or any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, dear run irrigation construction schedule. I know Jimmy sent out a revised schedule to all of us. Is everybody okay with it, or does anybody have any questions on it? Silence means it's acceptable.
Hope so.
Hopefully. The only thing I would say, Jimmy and, and Mike, is, you know, your last line is this document is subject to change. I certainly hope if it changes, you notify everybody well in advance of it changing. Otherwise, I think it's a little bit better and easier to read, so. Any other questions?
One question.
Yes, go ahead.
Originally, we had talked that nine holes would be, remained open during the project, but now we're saying it's going to be closed for the most part.
Good morning, Jimmy Murphy. I have, I don't have the problem doing it, it's just the setup and everything for the nine holes. I think that at a hundred and fifty rounds a day, I don't know whether it's worth doing, that's what we're doing currently right now. So I think at least first few weeks, let's get GT irrigation on property and do all of our mapping, I mean, I don't have an issue with it either way, I just know that it's, like I said, it's just a matter of getting them over. If somebody wants to play nine holes on it, I have no issue leaving the flags in and letting them do it. I'm still going to mow greens every day, I'm still going to do everything that we're doing. It's just, like I said, it's just a matter of whether we want to do it or not. I'm not opposed to doing it.
If you don't need the nine, you know, to open them.
If they don't need them, that's fine.
Don't, I'd rather have you work on the fairways and having grass grow and fixing the blotches and all that kind of thing.
That's our game plan.
That would be.
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
If necessary, if you have to open it, open it, but I, I don't, a hundred and fifty rounds is nothing.
Yes, sir, I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions on this schedule, are we all good with it? Are we going to publish this schedule now, that was the original thought process?
Yes, sir, we, we just wanted to, whenever you guys are good with it, then we'll send it out to membership and get it in front of everybody. Now, we have a greens committee next week, so I, I was going to give them the calendar as well, they've asked for that, so I would like to give them that as well.
All right, let's do it.
Okay.
Anybody disagree, or we go? Okay, thank you on that. I just wanted to go over the organizational charts one more time, since we really didn't spend any time on it last, last meeting, other than the fact that we've got it. Does anybody have any questions or problems, we'll start with the district first. The way Chris has reorganized this, assuming that the dollars were all covered in the budget, does anybody have any problems with how he's laid this thing out? Or are we all good with it? Again, silence is golden, I assume we are good with this. Anybody have a problem? Okay, on the, the Indigo organizational chart. Anybody have a problem with this, or we go? Understanding that there were some names missing, because I assume we have not assigned those, designated who, who those people are, is that correct? I know there's a lot of new faces in the restaurant, I have noticed that.
Good morning, Michael Lemire. Yeah, so on some of those, there is not names on there, but the, basically, department heads are on there. And as we designate a couple more important roles on there, then, then those names can go on there, yes.
This thing shows the lead bartender, no name, banquet captain, no name, and service manager, no name, so do you have those yet? Or are you looking to fill those?
Yeah, and I can, we can definitely fill those in, those I wouldn't consider department heads, but if, if you would like to put those in there, I mean, they're subject to change, too, I mean, we do have people come and go. But as far as that, as an org chart, will remain correct.
Okay, can we put some names on it?
I can have that, I can put current, I can go current, I mean, it'll just update.
I know people come and go.
Right.
That's part of.
That's a problem.
That's fine. The other question I have is.
That one wasn't on the agenda packet.
Yeah, I thought we put one in the board packet, but we have some over there, Deb's getting one for you.
It's the same one you got last meeting.
I thought it was, but last I saw.
Okay, so we're good, everybody's good with the organizational chart, I'm, I'm still concerned.
Thank you.
Over.
I got one.
A assistant manager, because I don't see it on here, and I don't know why, I don't see it on here. Why, why would I not see an assistant manager on here, or do I see it and I just don't realize it?
Assistant manager for what?
The restaurant. Oh, that's the service manager? Okay, so can we change that to assistant manager, if that's indeed what it is? I mean, I, now, again, my, my understanding of assistant manager is somebody who manages the restaurant, doesn't do anything else. And we're going to have that type of coverage from the time we serve food to an hour and a half after we stop serving food, and that would be between October and March. If you want to talk about loosening it up a little bit, other than that, that's, we can have that conversation, but I expect to have an assistant manager, I would like to think that we would have an assistant manager on duty, or a manager, one or the other, I don't care. But somebody who's only responsible for making sure everything's running the way it should be, and taking, taking care of our customers.
You don't want them on the floor? How are they going to accomplish that, they're sitting behind this? I mean, they have to be out on the floor to.
No, well, they have to be on the floor, how else can they take care of the customers?
Exactly.
Right. Which means that if, who's the, Sandra is, is doing paperwork for three or four hours, somebody's got to cover on the floor.
Absolutely, so, and we've had this discussion with her. So obviously, our food service hours are typically eleven to two-ish, and then four to six-thirty-ish, which, which creates office time. There's going to be times at the end of the month where we might have to be doing inventory, or it might be something that's a little more dramatic, where, where we just did inventory yesterday. We did have somebody else watching the floor while she was taking care of that, so I think that falls in line with your expectations.
Do you remember that we gave you money for an assistant manager two, three years ago?
We did.
And the person left for various reasons, and was never replaced.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct, but we also, you got to understand, that same timeline, we got hit with COVID, and we basically shut the whole restaurant down for months.
This was before COVID.
Right, and, right.
But we never replaced the person, so you had.
Not, not through COVID, yeah. And so up to this point, we've been using, you know, what, what, what we have, but obviously, we've kind of set a new game plan here, so, you know, when we go through the budget later, it's going to reflect, you know, it reflects, you know, what you're, what you're looking to do.
Okay. Any questions on the breakdown of his people? Any public comments? Okay. Thank you, Michael, you can stay up here, Michael, we're at the point, oh, no, you got to sit down for a minute. New business, is there any new business? Discussion to and from the board.
I just have a couple of questions from the last meeting. The dog park benches, and what's the update on that?
Kelly, excuse me, Kelly met with Supervisor Gilpin last week, and they discussed some of the locations that they felt would be best for those particular benches. Kelly's put together a diagram at this point, Bob, I don't think, have we gotten the concrete? I think we were waiting, we had a staff member that was out, that was the one that we needed to install, so, okay, so when?
I, I, I can tell you that I, I asked Bob to come the next meeting with, with everything if he possibly could.
Okay.
So, next meeting, I hope.
Yeah, I got down dog park update six seventeen. Anything else you guys want to bring up?
Real, real quick supervisors, I'm drafting the, I'm in the process of drafting the proposed changes to the, you know, to go to five popular seats, and I just wanted to reconfirm that the plan is, is on years when there's a presidential election, that's when we're going to elect the three, and then off years, the years not to be voted by for, that would be the two, so it'll be three, one presidential elections, and then that's the, what everybody's happy with.
I'm fine with that. And we, and you were going to give that to us next meeting?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be in the board packet, that'll be coming out next week.
Everybody's okay with that? And then we're, we're just going to review this, and then we're going to hold until October, when the northern has come back down, and then we'll have a, I guess, a special meeting, or something to inform them of what our intentions are.
It'll be a public, it'll have to be a public hearing, but yeah, so this will, what you'll get in, in the next board packet is going to be the draft, and then if there's any changes, we can discuss it at the, you know, at the, at the next meeting, but it won't, there's not going to be a vote on it until we have the public meeting.
Right, and then that's how we agree to it, okay. Anything else? I've got just one thing to bring up, I met with Ariel and Kelly, and two gentlemen from the pickleball group the other day, and they gave us a list of, of things that they would like to see on the, improvements on the pickleball courts. I could just tell you briefly, they're looking for better shading, they're looking for seating, they're looking for an additional gate, a timer to the lights, because I guess the lights we have problems on, somebody leaves, if, if the last person playing leaves, they stay on all night. So we're going to look into all that, we're going to have another meeting with them, we're going to invite Drew, go out to the facility and see what we can do. This is not something that will be addressed this year, but this is just to let you know, because I'm not even sure what we're talking about or what the cost might be, but it's just a follow-up.
Are we talking about improvements for residents, not for outside tournaments and stuff?
Right, this is for residents, these two gentlemen were, I had them, Alex, Andrew, Greg Norton, they are residents, and that's what we're doing, they did what, try and talk about tournaments. I told them quite frankly that, you know, they said, well, we can raise money and pay for stuff, and I said, no, I personally don't think we should be obligated, I mean, we appreciate the offer, but we shouldn't be obligated to anybody who raises money for us to do construction, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll see how it goes out, but no, the, the thought process is to make a better scenario for the residents.
And I'm fine with that, but I think, I don't believe that we should close our eyes to the fact that we can showcase Southern Lake by having tournaments here, no different than we do on the golf course. That's a benefit. I, I understand it's for the residents, so is the golf course, but yet we do have tournaments come in to showcase Southern Lake, and I think you could do the same thing at a pickleball court.
I don't disagree with that. I just want to, I wanted to fix it best for the residents, if we can then host tournaments, if they decide they would like to propose to us, that's fine. Any other board-to-board discussions? Okay, budget workshop. I would recommend that we do, instead of doing capital planning, let's do, let's do the golf and the restaurant first, and then we can run them right into the capital part of it, and get done with golf totally, and then we could do the other two, the utility and the general fund, is that acceptable?
Supervisors, you need me to remain for budget?
I'm sorry?
Do you need me to remain for budget? I don't usually.
No, I don't think so.
Have a good weekend.
Before we begin, if you look at those, I don't know, where is those, did we include those three sheets? Did you guys get those three sheets?
I got it.
That I sent out, or that were included in the package from me?
Yes.
Yeah. Should I, let me just explain these three sheets if I could, in case there's any questions on it. This, the first sheet, the budget planning process sheet, that's just an update of where we are, based on where we would like to have been and what was actually turned in, so this is kind of where we are at this point. But then if you go to the budget summary page, this one, that is the numbers as we are, based on what has been turned in to this date. The only exception, the only number that differs from what has actually been printed, is the assessments on the general fund. On that number, I removed the five percent and added the fifty thousand like we've discussed. If you remember correctly, we took, he had five percent increase on assessments, and we said, no, no, no. He was, Chris did that in anticipation of the money for the loan. So I took the five percent out, and as, based on a conversation I had with Amanda, she said, well, you could get fifty thousand more in that account, and probably achieve it. So I took the five percent out, and I added in the fifty thousand, excuse me, and therefore, it's, it's the three, four, eight, oh, number. Otherwise, every number is where we actually are today. So the number that, for example, that, the capital items, those totals are the numbers that are going to be present, that we're going to go over today, those are your totals. The golf fund, the general fund, I mean, it's all there. So if you look at this green sheet, and you're just looking at where we are, we, right now, the proposal is to spend nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, thirty-five dollars more than we're going to take in. The expenses would exceed the, the revenues by that amount, based on where we are today. Okay? The other page, this cap, the capital recap page is, again, a summary sheet of all the numbers that have been turned in, and if you look at the, the budget, the budget line is, is one point fi, one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's the amount that we have to play with this year, before capital. So I ran that number across, and then I took the numbers that were turned in, the difference of those numbers and the million five hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that gave you a plus or minus. So actually, if you go to the total on the plus and minus, we want to spend in the next five years a million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we don't have. But then you have to throw in our reserve money that we have, and our reserve money over six million, based on what Amanda gave Chris myself, is a million six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So I ran that across, and at the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, we actually have sixty-four thousand left, which still leaves us with six million dollars in reserves. So basically, we're in not that bad a shape doing what's on here. But keep in mind, when you look at the capital request, after the first two years, to Michael's point, they dropped down dramatically, and I'm sure we're understating what the capital request will be for the last three years or so. So we shouldn't get too cocky and too, and too confident that we're in good shape, because I'm sure there are things we don't know is going to happen. But that gives you kind of a synopsis of where we are at this point in time.
So Ray, when you put the 50,000 in, that's, for the assessments, is that a 3.48% increase? Is that what you said? Instead of 5%?
No, it's just a $50,000 increase over what we actually collected, what we projected.
And, and what's the percentage of that? Or do we know?
And the reason you only wanted to put the 50,000 in?
1%, 01%.
The reason I only did 50,000 is that it was a number that Amanda gave us that she thought we could collect, that we could get. Okay. Based on not raising anything. But if we, we talked about 5% in putting that money in. Right. And I haven't, that's not in here. None of the monies to pay off any of the loans is in any of these numbers that you're looking at. With the exception of, the capital report for '26 and '27 has payments in there, estimated payments in there. Based on what Chris gave me, of what the loans would cost us. For example, in '26, '27, that 608,000, the 608,000, I'm sorry, the 836,000 includes an estimated $608,000 loan payment. The 655,000 in the general fund, that includes an estimated $400,000 payment. But the revenues aren't there to cover that. So we're actually, that's like leaving more of a cushion, if you will. The other thing you should note is at the bottom of that capital request page. Since Chris had a, I'm having trouble with the word, amortization chart. Yes. My, my math was off initially, and what I thought we would have to pay based on what we're borrowing. So based on the numbers that Chris gave me. We would have to actually, we're going to have a choice, but we have to raise assessments for five, five years, not four years. If you look at that bottom, at 5% increase each year. At the end of '26, '27, we will have raised 961,000. Okay? At 4%, we will have raised 753,000. So I'm not sure which one we're going to use yet, because we don't have the, the water rates, which we still have to factor in here. But it looks like it's going to take five years to get us the monies that we need to pay off the loan. Based on the loans being approximately $1 million a year. I explain that okay?
Yeah, it did. And, and you're looking at two separate things, because the general fund is really where that stormwater loan will hit and where you're mostly concerned with. I'm working with the, of course, rate consultant right now, and, and we'll have that draft product to you at the next meeting. But the principal and interest for any loan, whether the meter program, and also if we take an SRF loan, will be wrapped into the utility rate. There won't be any impact to the general fund. And when we're looking at raising the utility rates to cover this, again, we're looking to move to the middle of the pack, not to the high end of the pack. And right now, we're at the bottom of the pack. So you'll see that covered by the principal and interest. And then some of the utility, we didn't project the, the higher amount on the connection fees we're getting in right now. And that, that'll also go into a renewal replacement fund. So on the utility side, if we move forward with the rate case, and of course, with the connection fees, we're in good shape. It's, it's really that general fund and that note. And we also put into the utility rate case a 2.5% payment to the general fund each year, 2.5% off the top. To more structure moving any money from the utility operation to the general fund. And as I stated before, there's 26 local governments in the state of Florida that do that, anywhere from a percent and a half to 13%. So we're coming in conservative, but you also see that number in the rate case, and, and that transfer income is not in here for the general fund.
Okay. So now you've got. Budget.
Good morning again, supervisors. Just to knock one thing off your list here, there was a question about APRs on our financials. So there's three different APRs listed on that page. And the, the, the regular APR itself, what, what that is, is that's our total revenue divided by our total rounds, okay? And that, that number is a good number to go by. The average rate and the non-member rate. What they are is that's our green fees and cart fees divided by public rounds. Now, you got to remember that the document that we get with the financials from Indigo is a, is the same template that is used for all of their properties, okay? So that average rate and non-member rate would be calculating their greens fees and cart fees divided by public rounds.
It's green fees and what?
Cart fees. So why that number doesn't necessarily apply to us is because in our cart fee line. The majority, probably 90, 95% or higher, is generated from membership. So therefore, I would suggest to the board to not worry about those two rates. And if you would like to have those removed from the sheet, we should do so.
These are your numbers. So you're saying they're not right?
They do not, they do not make sense. As a KPI for Sunday Lake, they do, they do not make sense. And I have this discussion with Brian. I'll see if they can remove those from the document. But the regular APR number is something that we do, you know, want to keep on there, because that's something we want to track.
So, all I want to know, well, what is our average, how much are we getting per round? Is that a difficult, it seems to be more of a difficult question than I thought.
No, that is, that is a very, that is a really good question, and that's a KPI that we, you know, I'll see if I can remove those, and we'll see if we can get that calculation on there for you. Exactly. Yeah, Brian will help. Yeah, we could give, we could give you those numbers at any time.
If you're going to talk, you have to talk into the mic.
Brian Rhodes, Druin, I will send over all the KPI informations, the key performance index, that we, indicators that we need. It's an easy equation. It's set up as a public golf course. We are semi-private here. So as Mike said, it's, it's the cart fees are throwing off, they're inflating some of the public round numbers. But I'll, we calculate those every month, and I'll just send it over to you.
I think, I think what I'm trying to look at, what I want to see is what, outside of members.
Sure, right.
What people are paying. Excuse me. What people are paying for, so that we know what we're getting per round. Because I know you're publishing your rates.
Right, absolutely.
But if your rates are here, and what we're getting is way down here, we have to improve.
Correct.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, it's how we build budgets, right? We take, take the average round and, and move it.
Yeah, so these, all these three numbers, they're no good.
No, the, the average rate and non-member rate are going to be the ones that I'm going to work with Brian to get those calculated there for. We'll get it calculated different on the sheet. Right. I, I have a sheet that calculates them all the time. Right.
So you're going to redo it so we can see?
Right.
And then we'll go forward having the right information?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, moving on to budget. So the board had given me the goal of an overall golf fund net income loss of positive $250,000. With golf being $480,000 and FMB being negative 230. So as we start through this, you'll see that with this proposed budget that I have, the golf at 443,000. And the restaurant at negative 256,000. Now, as I go through some of these line items, I'll show you where the variance is as we get there. I think on the golf side, you mostly see that that variance will, will come out of basically fertilizer. Obviously, we know, we have that discussion earlier, the cost of fertilizer is going up, but we also discussed having a, a second fall, wall-to-wall application of granular fertilizer. So when we get to that line, you'll see the big, the big jump, and you'll see why our variance is where it's at. There's also one other thing that I wanted to bring up as we go into this. Over the last couple of years, we had discussions about us mowing the extra areas on the outsides of the golf courses. The, the district gets paid an extra assessment for everybody that has a golf course lot, and I believe that number was somewhere in the $40,000 range. And that revenue and discussion was, was technically given to us to maintain those areas. That is not in this budget, just so you know. So I don't, I don't know how we keep track of how that moves or whatever, because.
It's one of those things in life.
Right. So now that we have a positive EBITDA line, we have a positive net income for the course, it doesn't really make sense for you to hand me $40,000 to hand it back to you, if, if that makes sense. So I just want to, I just want the board to still understand that that $40,000, we're now, we're maintaining those areas as where the district was before. So with that being said.
I, I just assume we're not changing our, who's doing what.
We are not changing that plan. I'm just letting you know that there is no, there is no reference to that $40,000 being in this budget.
Okay.
Just, just.
Thank you for letting us know.
Correct. All right, does, does everybody on the, the line item page here, starting with revenues, do you guys have that one? I'm off the summary page now.
Are you going about the page with the membership revenues?
Starting with revenues, yep.
I was, oh, we don't have numbers.
So I'm going to kind of dive down through this, kind of line by line, so you can see it. If you guys need to stop me to ask a question, you're more than welcome to do so. Starting off with dues, dues and cart fees, we have set that up.
Wait, let me, wait, let everybody get on the page. Show them which page. You got it? This page. Well, mine's black and white.
What's the page number down at the bottom?
There's no page.
Just too much of this.
We need a copy over here. There's copies. Do we not send this stuff out?
Yes. This was.
Nobody's got it, except me? Debbie got it?
What, what is that that you have?
Well, mine's black and white. It's the one I've had. No, I got it.
I do. I do.
No, I didn't. That, this was not included.
I got it now.
It was in the original package that went up.
Huh?
It was in the original package that went up. I'm not sure why you didn't, why it's not there.
It's not in my.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
That's five-year plan.
Okay, we got it.
Okay, well, let's go.
Okay, so again, we'll start off with membership revenue, dues and cart fees. Obviously, it's been decided for a 5% increase across the board at membership rates. Did you, I'm sorry, does the membership rate, that, is that included? That should have been included in your packet too. The one that shows all the membership rates and the membership types. So we did update this since the last meeting. So you'll see that in total memberships, we have, we have estimated that we are going to have 13 new memberships as a growth. And it's all broken down in the lines. Obviously, there's attrition. There's migration, and then we do, we do gain a few members at a time. If you look in the bottom right corner, you see that total totals 1.349. If you notice in the budget, I got it set right at 1.3. Just want the board to know that we do offer, and we always, we have offered a 2.3% discount to everybody that pays with cash or a check. That number works out to be about $31,000 if, if everybody did so. We also, every year, we, we tend to have medical leave of absence credits. Those discounts, you know, can vary from year to year. I did, I did look, and last, last year in total discounts with 2.3 and all the medical leaves and everything like that, we had $58,000 worth of discounts. In 2020, we had 47,000. So we're kind of right in the middle there by saying that it's going to be right around 13 after all those discounts, give or take. So I think the 1.3 for dues and cart fees is a good number. That equates a 6% increase from current year. All right, moving on to greens fees and cart fees. Using, you know, our average rates and, and with, with the projection of that going up a little bit, plus, we're going to see a few more rounds next year by prediction. Obviously, with all of COVID, golf took a pretty big boom. If you look at our rounds over the last few years, you see that we and on this sheet, it doesn't go over, like, way back, but we were doing in the lower 70,000 rounds. 2020, we did 80,000 rounds. 2022, we did 86,000 rounds. Proposed for next year is 87,000 rounds. Obviously, that's not a huge increase, but with, you know, with the huge boom from COVID, that's projected to kind of level off. So with that being said, we do, we are predicting a 7% increase in greens fee revenue, which is at about 1.237. So you'll notice that the the two are fairly balanced. So 1.3 from membership, 1.237 from outside rounds, from outside revenue. We looked at the current rounds played at public versus member. It's about 55% of our rounds currently are member rounds, 45% being public. If you notice, that kind of correlates quite well there on, as far as revenue goes. It always hasn't quite been that way, but it's a lot closer now. Any questions on those two line items? I'll move on. All right, merchandise sales. So obviously, you know, you see an 8% increase in, in merchandise sales. Obviously, with inflation, as things are going to cost us more, we're going to keep the, the same cost of goods percentage. So therefore, our, the things that we sell are going to cost more. That's going to show, that, that is obviously going to show that increase there as far as revenue goes. Again, COVID had another positive factor for golf. You know, we, we've sold a lot of hard goods in the past two years. It's just been a huge boom for golf. So this isn't necessarily reflecting that we're going to sell a ton more stuff, it's just reflecting more inflation, okay? Driving range income. I put in my notes here, that 74,000 that were estimated actual this year could be a touch low. I, I ran that number again the other day, and I did the last 12 months. Let me get to that number here. And that number was slightly higher. So in the last 12 months, our range income is at 81,000. So the estimated actual is probably slightly low, because estimated actual has probably got some budget numbers in there for the remainder of the year. So I think 84,000 is a 14, 14% increase. And it's about three, we're projecting about $3,000 more dollars next year as opposed to the last 12 months.
I'm sorry, how much are you going to do this year, you think?
So, I, I think the 74,000 is slightly, slightly low. So I think if, if, if we if, if this summer matches last summer, it'll be around 80, 81,000. And in driving range income. Now, also in driving range income wise, slightly higher next year, we did our unlimited range plan cost did go up slightly, so there will be a little extra bit of revenue there. The cost per bucket is projected to remain the same. It's $12 a large bucket.
I'm going to challenge you on that. If you're raising the cost for the members, I suggest you raise it for the non-members as well.
Right. Well, the price of the bucket is, is actually the same for everybody. The only, so it, as a member, if, if, if you don't purchase the upgrade, you're getting charged the same price as the public. If I go to 13, 14.
If you're, if you're raising the price for the members, you got to raise it for the non-members, period. How am I going to tell?
I understand, but we, we, we raised.
You're going to go up and pay more, but the guys who come in from the outside, they don't have to pay more.
But it, that, that was kind of leveled out, because you got to remember, we actually raised the price and range the last two years to the public and did not raise it for the membership. So in this, and it's, and it's a very marginal increase.
So take the bucket, take the driving range rates up? So take the bucket, take the driving range rates up marginally then? They got to go up. If you're raising the members, you got to raise the public, Mike.
So we have our, I don't think in this packet we have the rate sheet. I think it was in our last packet.
Rate sheet right now is 12, 9 and 6.
12, 9 and 6. So, I mean, we could go 13, 10, 7.
I mean, don't you guys agree if we're raising the?
But again, unless, see, when you have the unlimited range plan, it doesn't matter what the cost of a bucket is. But that's going to raise the price for all the other members as well because the price. So with your membership, you get, I don't know what the number is. Just say you get $100 worth of range credit included in your membership. They're still going to get charged that same 13, 10, 7, or 12, 9, 6 to that person. So it's, it's in effect going up for the membership too.
I understand that. The only. All right, let's put it this way, for people who want to take advantage of the unlimited packages.
It may incentivize them.
Raise them and nobody else.
It may incentivize, well, so when we, so when we do that, when we do the numbers, like, for the range, for somebody that buys an unlimited range plan, they only need to hit two buckets a week, I think, to break even. I mean, that's really low.
What's that got to do with it?
That means they're getting a, a, a very, very, so they're probably paying, they're probably paying 50 cents a bucket.
Five, and the single you want to do two and a quarter.
Right, so I mean, there's a, there's a pile, a lot of folks on that that have the unlimited range plan. They're probably paying 10 to 50 cents a bucket. It's just really low. That's why we wanted to go up on it. It's just a really low number. I can't calculate it for sure because I don't know how many buckets they're hitting, but it's a lot.
So what, you don't want to raise the other prices or you want to raise them?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay if that's what the board wants to do. I just say it, it, it doesn't. I mean, we're, we're start, we don't want to price ourselves out of the game either.
You're only going to price the people who, who are paying the unlimited ones? You're going to.
Well, because they're, because they're, they're not. But they're, they're, well, I don't think we're screwing them. I think they've been getting a heck of a deal for the last five years. Yep.
We'll have a good looking driving range. It'll just be for members. I think, I mean, personally, I think you have to, if you're raising.
Well, that's part of this process too.
If you raise one, you got to raise them all. That would be my, my vote.
I would, I mean, I'm happy to do so. Is everybody else on the same page that we want to go up a dollar on all of our individual range buckets?
What do you guys think?
I, I, I think we're comparing apples to oranges here. People that do the unlimited, like my husband, he's out there three or four times a week.
Yeah.
You know, so it doesn't matter. If you raise it, we're going to buy the package anyway.
Right.
And that's 99% of the people. And I don't, with this kind of revenue that we're talking about, if we could have a reason and have a chance of losing it, then what are we doing?
Yeah, there's no guarantee that if we go up per, on the per bucket price, that we're going to make more money. We may sell less buckets.
Per bucket price for the unlimited.
Right.
So we're comparing.
What was it last year?
It's going up $25.
How much?
You're talking about the unlimited one?
Yeah.
They reached one up $25.
It's, it's.
They went up $25 last year too.
On the unlimited?
Yeah. Yeah, I take it out every year. I know when it goes up.
I'll double check that, but I didn't think it did.
Okay. I'm pretty sure.
I know we went up on the public range the last two years, but.
I just think it goes up, it goes up for all, not just for part of it. That's all I'm saying. I mean, what's the difference between 12 and 13?
A dollar.
I mean, if they're going to leave, leave us for a dollar, let them leave.
They're not going to leave us for a dollar because we're the only game in town.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, we really should be charging more. We are the only game in town.
All right, well, I'll, we'll, we'll make that adjustment and we'll bring it back to you next time.
Come back, yeah, come back with a, a recommendation on what you would do in there because it's more revenue for you.
Hopefully, I mean, that's obviously the game plan, so. All right, so moving on, so cart storage, club rentals and all that. I don't see that going up a whole lot. You do see where that we're projected to beat our budget this year as that category. I'm assuming we're going to, you know, the 18,000, I don't see where that, there's any opportunity for that to go up unless we start going up on, you know, the price of stuff and of storage and, you know, our rental clubs. So I think that'll stay relatively level. All right, food and beverage sales. You'll see at the bottom line, there's an 8% total increase. Obviously, inflation again is a factor in this. Everything is costing us more, so therefore, we're going to have to adjust our prices to, to maintain our cost of goods sold and, and those things.
The food sales on, on course.
Yes, so I did have that in my notes. So it has been discussed that we were going to reverse the nines in January and open up the snack shack.
Reflection of that?
So that's the reflection of that.
Okay, so we're going to do all this. Are we going to, did we vote to do that?
We did not vote to do that, but that was a discussion, so I put it in the budget.
Okay, but.
It is.
I think to be, we need a lot more discussion on reversing the nines.
And I'm fine with that, and then we still got time to, if, if we, if the decision is to not do that and open, if we decide against doing that, it's not that we couldn't still open the snack shack. We've done it before.
Listen, I'm the one that pushed the, the nines. If you guys don't want to reverse them, I don't really care.
I think that our whole golf course is, I mean, we have the shootout on the men's member, member. We have events where you can come up and get on that hill and watch the last shootout. I mean, that's our, that's our signature.
That's one event a year.
We, we could, I mean, we could still do that stuff.
Hell, half the time, we're starting on number 10 on deer instead of number one anyway.
We do anyway. And the reason why we do that is because if when we do a reverse shotgun, nobody wants to start on 18, 17, 16.
Shotgun's going on now, and yesterday, we started on number 10, not number one. So I mean, it's been going on for a long time. No, I'm just saying, I have no problem either way.
Switching the green, but I want the cart shack.
Snack shack open?
Right.
Yeah.
And do away with the cart going around on deer.
I think that's a good idea.
You have any what?
And eliminate the cart going around on deer.
Will you try it? Yeah, sure.
Well, I, I think soon we should decide what we're going to do and maybe wait till supervisor early's there and.
Sure.
Whether we're going to switch it or not, and then you have a direction.
And we can sit down one on one and we can discuss what, what that entails. If we switch the nines, there's, there'll be a few things that, that'll happen.
I thought we decided that we were going to switch the nines.
It's definitely been discussed, but I don't think it's been voted on.
I don't know if we voted on it. Was that the, was that a previous meeting? I didn't know we had a vote on it.
I don't.
I think the consensus was to do it. Now, if you guys want to bring it up again.
But I subsequently have changed my mind. I told you that the other day. I don't think it's necessary because if they're starting on 10, they're not going to go to the cart shack. I don't know why I'm saying the cart shack. Snack shack.
Well, they'll, they'll catch it on their back nine. Because when they go, when they go to what is now one.
You get two hits at it this way.
So either way, if, so.
I don't care either way. I, I take the Ben's point and your point. I'd rather just have the, I'm trying to get money by utilizing the, the caddy, whatever.
Snack shack, so if we open up the snack shack, so we'll see what that does. So we, we can always, we can always, we can always compare our revenues with the snack shack being open without a bev cart to how we operate now with a bev cart. And then we can reevaluate that situation and we can determine what we want to do after that. So I don't, I have no issues with that.
Outside of, at the next meeting, when all five of us are here, can we have a conversation and decide which one we want to go?
I think so. Okay. So let me know if what information you may have for me.
Have the shacks, the snack shack open, and hopefully, we'll do that 20,000.
Right, and we'll, and we'll, we'll calculate all those numbers and we'll reevaluate the situation and see if it worked or didn't work.
Okay.
The game plan to do the, the nine hole, switching the nines was January 1, just because we could utilize the rest of our scorecards, we could have it all organized if we were going to do that. I would suggest probably if we were going to open up the snack shack, I would say October, November.
I'd say October is great.
Well, both courses are, deer one may not be open in October. The first of October, I'd say November.
I mean, and that.
To be safe.
Yeah, and that's, and that's fine. We'll, we'll reevaluate that, we'll, we'll reevaluate that because we used to have the snack shack open before. So I can go back and try to find, I can go back and try to find those numbers. It's been not, not just the previous time with the ice cream and all that. We had it open seven, six or seven years ago. It used to be open years ago, yes.
They used to have hot dogs ready and all kinds of stuff.
Right. And we're also, you know, it hasn't been, it hasn't been utilized in a little while. So just so the board's aware that, you know, it does have to be, it does have to be food, food handling safe. So if the health inspector comes, it has to pass inspection. So we're going to have to go through all that and evaluate that, which we will do. But I say, I say October 1st is a good to shoot for it, so. All right, we'll go for November 1.
Yeah, November 1 would be safer.
Through April.
But maybe work a little before that to get it, where it's up and running, November 1st. Because if we start November 1st, it could be January. I can promise you that.
That's good.
All right, so. All right, so the total, total food sales, we were looking at about an 8% increase. Alcohol sales.
Way low.
What, food sales?
Yeah, that's, that's nothing. That's my opinion.
So the overall, so the overall revenue on, on food and beverage, let's see, so this year's budget.
He wants to talk about food sales. He thinks you're low on the restaurant, on the restaurant number?
Right, so that's a $72,000 increase from current year.
If you can't grow it more than 8%.
Which line, I'm, I'm looking at the food sales. He's only growing that 4%. Am I got the right number? The actual food? Food sale restaurants, 4%.
4%, yeah.
That number I think is low. I mean, are you going to raise the prices this year? If you do, it's going to be more than 4%, I would think.
There's definitely, I mean, they are definitely going up. You'll see that, you know, the banquet revenue is going up 12. The a la carte I do have going up 4%. That's a $72,000 increase year over year. And it's, you know, significantly higher than our prior year actuals. I mean, it's a.
I mean, I would think personally that food sales in the restaurant, that number could go up. Beverage on course, that, I would probably leave that alone. That's an unknown.
Right.
Beverage in, in the restaurant, that's non-alcohol.
Right, that's soda and all that. I don't.
But food sales in the rest, banquets I wouldn't raise because banquet is an unknown. But food sale in the restaurants, especially if you're going to raise the prices, got to go up more than 4%, I would think. So I would challenge you on that one personally.
Okay, we'll reevaluate that number and we'll bring it back to you the next discussion. All right, so alcohol.
On banquets and then, but we don't have, we've got a little bit of increase that's.
Right, so that's getting us.
It was a non, non pandemic, one would think if you're going to focus on banquets, which, whether we agree or disagree with that, they ought to be higher than that. You're coming off a non pandemic, off of a pandemic year and only going to go up 35,000.
So I would look at those two, the food sales and the banquets and the restaurants.
Gotcha. We will look at those. Okay, moving on, alcohol sales.
One thing on the restaurant, while I'm thinking about it, we didn't change the menu this year, did we?
Yeah.
We changed, did we change it during the year? We, I know we changed it for October, beginning of the season.
Correct.
Did we change it during the season?
We did make a few adjustments along the way. We didn't make a, a giant wholesale change.
Should we not do that?
We, we should, and, and I definitely like to do that. We actually just changed it, so came out the first. So obviously, we have, we got a new chef in November and he, that was about when that new menu came out. And he, he had to run with that menu. He, he inherited that menu and, and he, obviously, we had a really tough season with, as far as staff goes. So he was kind of running the show most of the time. So we didn't have a, we didn't really have time to, to really sit down and, and really build out another menu. Usually, we try to update it quarterly, so we skipped a quarter.
Okay, so the plan would be next year.
We'll try to change it a little more often, yes.
Okay. Food, alcohol.
All right, so alcohol sales, you can see it's an overall 9% increase.
What are you doing with beer? That's everybody's big question.
That is everybody's big question all the time, and me and Brian have had several conversations about that. Our biggest challenge when it comes to beer is draft beer. That is where our cost of goods is the toughest to make. I would, and it's a discussion we got to have. I, we, we're currently at the member price for a pitcher beer is $10. I strongly suggest that we increase that to at least 11 or 12. I think 12 would be the number that I would go to at least. I mean, you can go a lot of other places and it's definitely higher than that. That would be my recommendation, and that would be a discussion that I think we should have. Canned beer.
Let me ask you this, well, you're going to raise it, you, you think you can get 8% more just in, without raising it? Is that what you're saying here?
So I mean, that, that 8% include, includes more than draft beer. That's also the canned beer and all that other stuff, which is another.
Beer, it's all beer shit.
Correct.
So you think you can get 8% without raising the prices?
I, I think with our current situation, I think we can. With me and Brian, we're talking about canned beer going up 50 cents as well. I think we're at $3 a can, so he was, he was suggesting that we would go to 3.50 a can.
So if you can get an 8% increase without raising prices, if you raise prices, it's going to be more than 8%.
Well, the 8%, we, we were talking about, we were definitely talking about having an increase. Correct.
So.
That would be a recommendation. Obviously, that's a discussion we can have.
Included in the number.
Yes.
Is including the 8%?
Well, I, I, correct.
Oh, no, 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 come on, Mike.
Yes, that's how we evaluated it. Am I correct, Brian? Yes. Yes, we went with 11. That is correct. 11 and 3.50.
Well, you should probably tell us in the number I included, the pitchers going to $11 instead of pulling it out the way we're pulling it out. Let me just tell us. So if it goes to, if you go to 12, it's going to be more revenue, right?
Correct.
So the question is, do we want eight, 11 or 12?
I don't believe there's any reason not to charge 12 actually. They're not going to like me saying that.
They're, no, they're not, they're not going to like it at all, but I don't care.
12, 12, and we'll see more dollars here.
All right, and 3.50 a can?
I don't, I don't, how many guys? Most of the canned beer, I assume, is sold on the golf course, right?
No, there's, there's a few folks that buy, they buy the buckets when they come inside. Yep.
Go to $12 and raise it from 8% to whatever it's going to be. It probably will go up to what, 10 or 11%?
It very well could be. I'll calculate it out because I can estimate how many pitchers we sold, so.
It, it's pretty difficult, Mike, to do it, but everybody's doing it. I mean, it's.
It is. It's like ripping a band-aid off.
You're a bad guy because you're doing it, you know.
Yeah, I pay $8 and $2.83 for a glass of iced tea.
Right.
What's the beer at that golf course that you guys have food at? You ate that, there, what's that place?
San Gil Grill. San Gil Grill.
Yeah, what is it?
15.
Yeah, your competition, I, I take $12.
Right, I don't know if they have a member price though, so if he goes over there, he's a non-member.
They have a member and a non-member.
So I was talking about the member price. Our non-member price is, is higher too.
I think 12, I think $12 is okay.
Maybe you don't want to talk about it, but how much do you pay a case for beer?
It, it depends on which one you're getting. They're all different. I could, I could, I could get you those numbers. I, I, off the top of my head, I do not know. I, I, it's, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
And I understand you got to pay for helping off, but you're talking about a buck a can. And that's, that's buying it through the restaurant or through Walmart or something like that. I'm sure you would get a better rate than that.
Not necessarily.
Well, then we ought to, you ought to be buying it through Walmart.
Which you can't do.
Why?
It's illegal.
It's illegal to state. We have to follow the state.
You have to buy a distributor.
So we pay over, it is, the last time I ran it, I believe they went anywhere from $1.9 to $1.32 a can.
Correct. And we're selling it, we're selling it, that's, that's not a very-
I mean, once we start adding in the labor and the-
That's not a high percentage though.
And keeping it, it's, it's where, you know, obviously, we, always, it would be 25%, so if you bought it for a buck, you'd sell it for four.
Right.
Same thing goes, you know, the old days, it was, if you bought, you know, four beers, your fifth one was free. Doesn't happen anymore, you gotta pay for every beer, that's the one that pays for electricity. Okay, what else? Keep going. Liquor sales you're gonna raise too, I assume, what, what did you plan in your increase with liquor sales?
So, our liquor sales, our cost of goods are, are holding fairly steady with, with our liquor sales, so, I think we're at, are we at $4 for a house mixed drink, it's, I believe? I don't think we necessarily need to go up there.
So the 7%, the 7% increase in the restaurant and liquor sales has no increase planned in it?
I, I think, I think with that 7%, Brian, what did we discuss on that one, I don't think we- No, you, right.
It was what?
I, I think we were talking about a quarter.
We use the total of percentage increase, so certain things, when we have a quarter, certain things would stay, stay the same, and it would average out, because we were, you know, same thing goes, our liquor is not going up as fast as beer, and the pricing increases from our distributors, I mean, beer, they're hitting us every quarter, and then they're turning around and putting, uh, basically fuel taxes on us too, so every delivery is $25, just for them to show up, right? Liquor is not-
So they're-
Not being advertised that, as bad that way, I mean, obviously, certain things going, you know, we've, more well drinks are going out, those prices have not been adjusted, and then going up a, a few percentage points in well doesn't matter comparatively, and the number of beers that we sell compared to the number of bottles of alcohol we bring in.
So we'll, we'll evaluate certain stuff, and there will be some increases, but it's probably not gonna be across the board for liquor drinks.
Why not?
Well, we'll be-
I mean, you guys aren't trying to help yourselves?
Right, but, I mean, we do-
I mean, what's the difference whether you pay 4.75 for a scotch, or five bucks? What's the difference?
We can go 25, we can go 25 cents across the board if that's what, if that's what the board recommends, I'm, I'm obviously fine with that.
The board is not here to tell you-
But we're trying to maintain, we do everything based on the cost of goods percentage.
You're supposed to tell us what you think you can get.
Right, so we'll, what we do is we evaluate the prices based on what it costs us to sell, and I, like Brian said, we base it off of our cost of goods sold. Sometimes things sell for a lower cost of goods and to offset some of those that cost a little bit higher.
You ever look at your competition?
Yes. We are definitely lower, we are definitely lower prices than beer.
I can't get a scotch in this town for under seven bucks.
I know that, yes, but we-
My, except for some of my-
And we charge, our, that's what I'm saying, I remember, I remember pricing, well, you know, I've come to the board before and asked, and asked this in previous years, and it was definitely a lot harder to have, it, it, we, we have made changes, but it, obviously, it's-
We raised the prices last October, did anybody complain about them?
Oh, yeah.
Other than the beer?
They complain and then they keep buying it, so.
Okay.
I, I, I just challenge you on your pricing.
Okay, so we'll reevaluate that pricing with a 25, at least a 25% increase on those mixed drinks, and I will reevaluate that number and we will bring that back, or, I'm sorry, 25 cents?
Stop working in so much on just percentages and, and look at your actuals versus your, if you're-
Okay.
You're doing an increase in memberships, which will mean more traffic coming through, so.
And obviously, you know- Sure, and, and, and over time, and, and obviously, the board has changed since then, since I've been involved with, with the costing of that, but it's, I mean, I, I remember having some difficult discussions about raising prices, and there's previous board members that were not for it, um, so we'll, in that aspect, that this board is in favor of that, we will reevaluate that when we calculate those.
I wish you quit saying that.
Yeah, I wish you would too.
This is your business to run, in my opinion. It isn't up to us to tell you what it takes to run that business.
Okay.
But I tell you that I just don't think, I said no.
Price of goods are going up, you know, if I was gonna take advantage, be selfish and take advantage of what the world is doing, what's happening in the world today, this is the time to do it, cause nobody really can say, that's not fair.
Okay, we'll, we will do that. Gratuities and room charges, that, that kinda follows suit with, with our banquet sales, um, and that, as, as we feel that those are coming back to more normal, uh, we'll see more gratuities and room charges.
So you're gonna come back with, the, the total food and revenue, beverage revenue is a million 440?
It's 1,440, yep.
So you're gonna come back with a new number on that?
So that's, that is, you know, so that's a hundred and $20,000 increase year over year, um, which is pretty significant.
Right, but we see some opportunities there, so you're gonna come back to us.
And we see, and we definitely, yep, and we have some opportunity to, to do even better.
Okay, keep going.
Alright, so, uh, as we go through the cost of sales, again, they're all based on percentages, so as our, as our revenue numbers go up, so doesn't the percent increase from our cost of sales. Typically, restaurant merch, we run around 69, 70%, food and beverage, we're around 37%, and alcohol is, is also around 37%, although, as I told you, cost of goods for beer's been running higher.
I got, I got, I have to ask this question, you just told us that the cost of alcohol's not really going up, but yet the cost, the cost of, according to this, it's going up 16%. It's gonna cost us 16% more to, to buy alcohol, even though the prices really aren't going up.
As revenue win, a- a- as we sell more revenue, the cost of that, yeah, the cost will go up. I can probably adjust that number, so that's, so that, that, no, no, that, that number-
I'm just saying, is it, is it a good number or not? If six, you're telling us that the cost of booze is going up, what is it?
Right, I see what you're saying, so, so that's based off a percentage that plugged in there for me, so I will make sure that percentage is correct.
I don't know.
So, base-
We plugged in a cost of goods sold, but-
On the percentages there? They're gonna fluctuate more, right? Cause when you look at, it cost of goods growing, I mean, if we cost everything out at, just say, 40%, when the sales line grows, the cost of goods remain the same, the percentage change there is gonna show bigger, even though it's truly the same cost of goods. So it's still priced in the same manner, it's just a question how you, how you get there, it just shows differently on that line. It's a, to be honest, I wouldn't, I'd eliminate that line and just put a, a cost of goods percentage number, would've been something that we can compare better.
Okay. So on the labor-
But basically, if you, you expect in total, total revenue is up 8%, total cost of goods is gonna be up 7%. It's what you put on the paper.
Right, but it, for F and B, they don't, 100, it doesn't always necessarily correlate because there's a, it's a percentage.
Basically, that's about top line and bottom line, whichever way you wanna look at it.
Right.
And in today's world, that's not necessarily off. Even though it's difficult to explain.
Mm-hmm.
Well, inflation's around 8%.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Okay, so-
Actually, you haven't done anything.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, everything's going up, so, you know?
Right, we're, yes, so we're, that's, that's why you're not seeing a huge increase on the bottom line, because we're chasing inflation right now, yes. And also, also going along with that, when we get into the labor percentage here, um, minimum wage is actually increasing as well, um, and it's gonna keep increasing until it gets to $15, so October 1, minimum wage is gonna go up 10%.
Where, where are you now?
So we're in, we're in operating labor, um, so you can see the overall, basically, on the percentages of labor going up, you see it's around 6%, uh, 5, you know, overall, it's 5%. Minimum, minimum wage is going up 10%, it's going from 10 to 11. So, not everybody's a minimum wage employee on our, on our staff, but obviously, we're gonna give, uh, merit increases to those who deserve it, and that's probably gonna be in the 2 to 3% range, um, after we do evaluations, and, but the, we don't have a choice when it comes to minimum wage, it's going up a dollar, that's gonna, that's gonna raise us up quite a bit, so overall, we're predicting a 5% labor increase across the board, in all categories. Does anybody have any questions individually when it comes to those? Payroll taxes, that's, uh, just based on a percentage of, you know, payroll, um, so those directly correlate to payroll. Going into operating expenses, let me get my notes here, golf ops. Starting off with electricity, obviously, there's gonna be, uh, the three-year trend kinda shows that it's going up a little bit, going to, the lithium cards has actually helped us some, um, but the cost of electricity obviously does not stay the same either, so we just added $1,000, uh, for next year over this year. Cell phone allowance, it, uh, I stayed the same on the budget line, uh, that's, we're gonna be, um, back to that as far as cell phone allowances go. Supplies, we did go up 4%, obviously, that's directly acco- to inflation. Scorecards and pencils, again, that's up $500 year over year.
You don't have to cover every line, I would just take a category and ask if there's any questions, or concerns.
Alright, so you see, which one was that?
I mean, you got, for example, your total golf operating expenses, you have going up 7%, 58 to 62.
Right, so you see the big increase in travel and education, uh, that number's pretty much been budgeted around that $1,400. Basically, what that covers is that, we, we send, um, a couple staff members to the PGA show every year, the last couple years, we haven't had it, so that's gonna go back in there. Handicap fees, you know, it went up from 8,500 to, to 10,500, uh, as you notice, it was over 10 grand this year for handicap fees, that's what everybody, that's what we pay the Florida State Golf Association for fees, the more members we have, the more we pay for that, all non-members, they pay for it on their own, um, but their fees actually increase year over year too, so.
Michael, take a category, ask anybody if there's a problem with it.
Alright, so we are moving on to the G and A expenses, does anybody have any questions on those?
I mean, that's only going up $9,000, right?
Right, so, alright, so golf course maintenance expense, uh, if you have any questions on any individual ones, but I will point out, the couple of the big ones is the, the fertilizer, it's a $42,000 year over year income, uh, for the fairway fert, and a $20,000 increase for tea fert. If there's any other questions?
Insecticides, significant reduction from years past.
We, we still have quite a bit of inventory for mole crickets and ants, so we're gonna, we're gonna carry that over, there's no sense in repurchasing stuff and stockpiling, uh, insecticides, as far as that goes. The other thing is, is that if you look at the contract labor, um, we put it in there for a couple outside applications if need be.
Green fertilizer.
So-
Down 70,000.
That's going down?
So the reason that's going down is because we're not gonna use as much foliar, we're gonna do more granular. Uh, in the past, they did more foliar than we did granular, and the granular, to me, is a, a better program versus, the, the new granulars are a quick release, so we're still gonna do the monthly foliers, the bi-weekly foliers, and the other thing I'm trying to do is buy more generic than buying full name brands now.
Where, but, where's that increase shown? Going to the granular?
Well, gran- granular just lasts longer, so you're gonna still do your two apps, they were spraying fol- foliar every week.
So you're still, you're not gonna use as much fertilizer?
We're not gonna use as much foliar, as much liquid, we're gonna use more granular. That lasts longer, it's a hundred, it's, it's basically, uh, four weeks, basically what we've been doing since I got here.
We talked a lot about the pre-emergence, but here we're going down 10,000.
But we went up on Ronstar, Craig, but the Ronstar application and the, the big bulk app, like what we're, we're getting ready to do, that's what went up in there. That's fallen under the fertilizer line. That's a pre-emerge as well, is what we're getting ready to throw out.
That's under that 152,000?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the, that particular category? I mean, my, my only question is, based on what you said you're gonna do on the golf clause, this covers it, it's in here, so you could do what you have to do to maintain the golf course.
Yep. And, and sand went down. I went and actually calculated how much sand that we're gonna use for the aerifications, and you try to, I mean, there is a fuel surcharge on it, but, I mean, I'm not gonna give you guys a fictitious number, I mean, I actually counted how much sand it takes me every time I aerify, and then what I was gonna do for the maintenance as well. I tried to, you know, we've talked about doing the bahia grass and stuff like that race, so I'm gonna try to do that, like we talked about, in some of the areas that are thinner out in the roughs, go out and seed them with bahia, and, and try to get them established. I have to establish them during the rain season, uh, because we don't have the irrigation out there. Um, and as far as the landscape and stuff, when, I try to leave some money in there, so we wanna do some additional plantings, the coquinas are gonna be continued, uh, but, you know, I'm gonna try to utilize that money and, and plant more trees as long as we can. You know, we, we've lost the left tree on number four, I'd like to go ahead and try to get some pine, on, on four turtle, I'd like to get that tree down and go ahead and, uh, plant a cluster of pine trees in there right now. But, I mean, that's why I try to leave the landscape budget as well.
Okay, keep going.
No more questions with golf maintenance, uh, the food and beverage expense, um, is there any questions on any of those line items? Just overall, 12% increase, it's nothing. Alright, sales and marketing, um, overall, 6% increase, there's that one number that jumps out, that 278, which is collateral materials, um. The biggest expense that we have that goes into collateral materials, you guys know the Patty Day Show that we run every year, that we have at the last few, uh, that's why that number's been down a little bit, but we, all the programs and all that stuff, we've, we've purchased for that event, so, um, that's why that number's back up, but we do have other collateral materials that we buy throughout the year.
Okay.
So, um, leases and other expenses, I mean, those pretty well fall in line, um, there's no questions on that, that brings our overall budget to a close, we'll reevaluate those key points that everybody wanted to, and we'll bring you back a revised revision for the next one. Are, are we doing that next meeting, is that the 17th?
What's that?
The next, are we reviewing this again on the 17th?
I don't have the schedule.
Oh, I don't have one, then, alright.
The next, are we doing what?
The next meeting. I was looking at-
Your next court meeting, are we gonna review? You're gonna bring your numbers back. When golf, I, I had to look at-
It says, it says-
Chris has got the schedule, I don't know.
It says June 17th, second budget workshop, all departments.
That'll be it.
So that's, that means this will be due, I'm, this will be due to Chris by Tuesday?
Right.
Just wanna make sure we're on some page with that.
Mike, I just have one question, and I think it's for the board, basically, not you, but has there been any more discussion, uh, about moving the lease into the budget? Into the actual budget of the golf course, the lease things? We made, they said we made 400 and some thousand, we got 400 and some thousand dollars in leases that are actually that, and I just wondered if there's any way we're ever gonna-
It's on the monthly report.
Move that, I know it's in the thing, but are we gonna put it in, add in the actual budget and show it to the capital expenditure?
It's in the actual budget.
So it's on there, it's just below the line, it's not, it's below the line. It's not, it's below the line.
It's in the actual budget.
But we, we show a four hundred and some thousand dollar profit.
Well, net, we, we show, yeah, that's, that's a net income, but that's before that. It's just, I, I don't understand.
We're showing the actual, the way he's got it, you're showing an actual loss of four hundred and forty-three thousand.
Yeah, no, 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 not in golf, that's, that's positive.
And that number, and this is, this page is not worth the pages written on. Just thought I'd tell you that, because your numbers, your annual budget by month. This, this page? The ones that's done by monthly, your monthly budget?
Right.
I don't know what, you got capital expenses of like a million two. I don't know where you got that number. And you, it's all in June, July, and August. I don't know what it is.
The, the numbers down here below the line? I'm not sure.
Do I have a different sheet? Do I have different sheets than everything? Why do I have different sheets than everything? This should. I don't know.
So these are not done?
These are just make-believe?
Yeah.
It's your totals, million three. Done? It, it's up to your totals?
Correct, this isn't complete, because this, in order for me to process all those numbers, it's gonna take me a hundred hours until we settle in on these numbers.
Why do I have it? Well, as, as best as I can figure it out, in golf, you're gonna pick up thirteen thousand dollars in profit. And in the restaurant, you're gonna pick up twenty-three thousand, uh, twenty thousand dollars in profit. Is that how you say it?
Correct, yes. And then we'll break it out, when, when we settle in our numbers here, I'll break it out month by month for you.
Okay, so that's what the board's gotta consider.
And that's gonna adjust a little bit with.
That's the bottom line, what he's, what he's trying to do. Without any changes that we discussed.
Right, and there will be some slight changes.
I just, I think on the restaurant side, it's way up.
I just, so when we look at this page, this, this summary page here that, that was put together by the district, right? So we, we've broken down that, that all these numbers here split up the G and A cost. So sixty percent of some of that goes into golf and forty percent goes into F and B across the board. So when you're looking at that bottom line and the restaurant, it shows negative two fifty-six, nine sixteen. That includes all the G and A expenses, all the marketing expenses, and that's fine. But I just, I just wanna let the board know that you see that negative two fifty-six. And if we were trying to project that down to zero, you're, we're looking at a twelve to fifteen percent margin, I think, to do that. So we would have to basically, you know, we're projecting one point four million dollars worth of revenue right, right now. If we wanted to get that number to zero, that number's gonna be like six, it's gonna be like five or six million. I just wanna make sure we're all.
We're not trying to get the number to zero. What we're trying to say, all, all I'm saying is, can't we do better than it? I think the point is.
All I can say is restaurants don't, aren't in business to lose money year after year after year after year.
That is, that is correct, but that's, that was the point of this conversation. When you see the financials that we put out every year, the restaurant has a positive net contribution, which in a traditional sense of, of the golf course world is income, positive income.
I think, all I was saying was, I, I, we gotta be able to do better than thirty-three thousand dollars.
Well, we're, we're gonna make, we're definitely gonna make some adjustments. Obviously, it's a, with the inflation rate that it is, it's a tough, it's gonna be tough to, to grow a ton. But we're gonna reevaluate, we, we will make some changes and we'll bring it back and we'll see how close it is to what you guys want.
I mean, you're going from, you're picking up sixty thousand dollars in golf. And you're picking up eighty thousand, seventy thousand in the restaurant. So you're picking up a hundred and thirty thousand this year.
Where are you getting sixty thousand in golf?
Where am I getting it from? Four thirty-one for three seventy.
Twelve.
No, four, four, no, 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 no. I said he's, he's picking it up over two thousand, the year. Four thirty-one is an increase of sixty thousand dollars in golf. Over that, the year before?
Yes.
What's that say?
Right.
So you got sixty thousand dollar increase in golf, seventy thousand dollar increase in the restaurant. It's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And now you're telling me you can only get thirty?
Well, the, we didn't have.
So my challenge to you is.
The difference between those years, there was, the inflation rate was not what it was right now.
Without giving me ten million excuses, my challenge to you would be to find the happy medium in between. I don't wanna hear the excuses. Just look at your numbers and see what you could do.
Well, we, we, we definitely found a couple of categories that we can reevaluate and we'll see what it looks like when we get those in there.
Anybody have any questions or any comments? Oh, you said no?
No.
Do you guys got anything to say?
No, just in, in my mind, Mike, it's, uh, it's not line by line. It's, you know, and I don't care whether you're up a hundred percent on one thing and it's, it's the bottom line at the end of the year. So, and I think the rest of it's, it's all that. It's not basically line by line, it's, it's the overall.
Right, well, we gotta, I mean, if you look at the bottom line right here, we got it trending in the right direction. At eighteen nineteen, it was negative two thirty-five to propose next year, positive one eighty-six. We're moving in the right direction.
If you only pick up thirty compared to a hundred and thirty the year before, you're not moving in the right direction. I don't know how much easier I can say it, Mike.
I, I, I hear you.
If you're telling me that the, the world has changed, which it has, and expenses are going up and inflation is going up, I'd say, great. Don't build off it a hundred and thirty. But there's gotta be, you gotta do better than. Prices like crazy.
Right, so, well, that's, that's what it's gonna, just what it's gonna take is increasing some pricing on some, on some things. So I'm gonna go back, you, you told me to, if I feel that's what I need to do, you told me that that's what I should do, so I'm gonna go. We'll do that, we'll bring it back.
I think you could do better than thirty thousand.
We will do it.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Any, anything else until next time?
Not budget-wise, but.
Now, we gotta go to capital next.
Okay.
But, go ahead.
While we got you guys. It's my understanding that the small practice area was opening up and we're closing down the other one again.
That is correct. There was, there, that was the original intent, and I, I'm glad you brought it up. There was some discussion at some point during the board of not doing that. So I just wanna make sure we're all clear on the same page that it's closing.
You sent out, and you told the world that it was opening June one, which it wasn't, because there's a sign there that says it's not open. There were people on the damn, the other facility, this is yesterday.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
That's what got me, is when I drove by and said, it's closed.
There's still people playing in the practice area and, and the other ones. And I thought they were supposed to be closed at the same time, and when the other one opened.
But they'll send out an email saying it's starting June one, or if it's not.
We had all the flags and everything, or is it?
I was there yesterday, there was a sign there that says it.
There's a sign that says it's closed.
Yeah. And they were, and the flag and everything was on the other practice area, across the street by the driving range. That wasn't shut down, there were people there.
Yeah.
The, the, the flags are being pulled, they'll be on the whole practice area.
Yeah, you might have to do just more than that.
We must have missed the sign, I didn't see the sign. We must have missed, we missed taking down the sign.
I'll take that sign.
We'll do it right when we leave here.
At the next meeting, Jimmy sent out this thing on, it's on your email. You may not have got, you just sent it out last night.
I sent it out to everybody, you're talking about the map?
Yes, sir. To everybody here?
No, I didn't send it to everybody yet, I just sent it to you.
Oh, to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like you to send it to everybody, we'll include this, a conversation next, next board meeting. But it looks good.
It's, it's less than we budget, we had in the capital budget, I just wanted to get it in front of you as quickly as I could.
Yeah, let's send it to everybody, put it in, we'll put it in the next board meeting. I do have one other question before we go to budget. Somebody had asked me this, what is the Tanglewood golf rates these days compared to ours?
We wanna know the Tanglewood rate versus the resident rate?
Yes.
I'll send it to you.
Can you email, somebody had asked me that? Can you email me that? And email me if it's different than the Tuesday and the Thursday rate? Okay, please. Any other questions on the regular budget before we go into capital? All right, let's go into capital, we'll start with golf and get these gentlemen out of here.
Actually, back to the budget. Based on our conversation of, with the capital last time, we had the, remember I had the ten thousand dollars contingency for new, replacing equipment in the restaurant? I moved that, that is in, I moved that into the operating budget, so there was ten thousand dollars that got added into that. On, I can show you the line item if you want, but.
This is the one that, that was sent out, do you have, not have a copy of this?
I have a copy of the, I have a copy of that, yes. But I just wanna let you know that I moved that ten thousand out of capital and it's in the operating budget that I put in there. So that was ten thousand dollars added to the operating budget.
Yeah, that's fine, good.
It's in there.
All right, so let's start with this year, twenty-two, twenty-three. I would just run down each of them and see if there's a problem.
So this is, based on what we talked about last time, this is what, what was requested. As I said, the, the kitchen equipment got moved to operating. And all the rest of the things in there that we had discussed are, are in there. I don't know, I mean, unless the board has changed their mind on any of these line items, I don't, we discuss whatever ones you want.
It was my understanding that we were going to look at the possibility of doing the green loop in-house and therefore reduce this five hundred and fifty thousand. I haven't heard what that new number may be, if it can be done at all.
Andrew Johnston and I are trying to get the, go off the deer run loops that you guys did. And we're just trying to get an actual measurement on the loops, the heads, and how far. We gotta measure from the greens to the satellites to measure for the wire. But we are working on it.
Does everybody really wanna do the green loops in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three? That'd be the first question.
More than likely not.
I would say more than likely not is my vote too.
And what we're gonna do then, because the equipment will already be on property and.
Correct, it's fifteen thousand dollar mobilization fee for GT irrigation.
I mean, enough is enough. I, I wouldn't do the green loops for a couple of years. I don't think we got a problem like everybody else thinks. I must be missing this.
Well, the only problem right now is that the, the sprinklers have to run more, so you're getting double water on the green because you gotta water the outside of the slopes. Right.
You have to put them in, it's what year you wanna put them in.
Correct.
If you don't wanna have the mold problems that you had this year.
Correct.
Because the water cannot sit on the greens and you can't, you don't, you have to miss the greens and not do the colors that you need to lose.
The, the slopes material is different than your greens material. There's not as much organic on the outside of the slopes. So you, they need more water than they actually get, but I can't keep watering the green. We have to, we're, we're trying to water it manually right now with hose and everything else to get, I mean, when the rain season, it's not an issue. But when it's dry, then it's hose time. You gotta, you gotta hook a hose up or put a sprinkler out there.
I gotta tell you, I, I don't wanna spend five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on green loops this year.
Well, that's why I was waiting for the other number.
I'm not so sure I wanna.
I'm not, I don't.
I don't know if I wanna do it in-house.
I don't either.
Yeah, if, if it's the intention, I, in my opinion, if we're gonna do it, the sooner you do, it's gonna be better. Because if we, the two or three years down the road, it could, it's gonna be, it's gonna cost more.
Deer only costs like a hundred and thirty, five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
But which is, it.
I just can't imagine, five hundred, it goes from that to five fifty. I just can't imagine.
I mean, look what the full course irrigation project jumped up to. I mean, it's, it definitely jumped, it will, I mean.
The irrigation problem went from one six to two million dollars. It didn't go from something like five fifty to, to, I mean, from one thirty-five to five fifty, that's like three and a half, four times.
I'm still gonna go, I mean, Andrew and I are still trying to get Tony to do the design. We're still trying to get a real number, even if we did put it out to bid, what it would cost. Some of these guys, I mean, it's just like the map, Ray. I mean, I've been asking for that for three months, for the map. I mean, it's, these, some of these guys are, are busy. Tony, we've actually, Andrew and I said the other day that we're gonna get rid of Tony Hoffman and try to find another engineer to do it, just to get a real price. I mean, it's not like I haven't been asking for it every month. But it's just, some of these people, they just don't wanna do anything.
Well, I would vote to move it. Anybody else?
Well, I can just say this, with all due respect to you guys and my fellow supervisors, that I, I will not be in favor of any capital on the golf course this year because of what we paid this year. But I'm, I'm just one. And just so we know, we, we, next year, I, I will vote against any capital spending on the golf course. But I, it's just me, but, so you know where I am.
So, so your, is your answer then?
The leases, the leases I'll have to be, because we have to do that, but I meant the other stuff.
So I'll, I'll, I'll ask a question again, Mike. Do you wanna do the green loops this year or you wanna move?
Well, it's, I don't wanna do it, no. I'm not gonna vote for it. I'm not gonna vote for any of them.
Thank you.
I'm fine with moving it.
Beverly, I know you wanna do them, can we, can we push them back?
I, push it back how far? No, my vote is no. It has to be done. I, I want a number, but it has to be done.
I don't wanna do it in twenty-two, twenty-three. I believe Mike is, is in agreement with that. Are you in agreement with that?
The only reason I'm hesitant is because I don't want mold on those greens out there and then come back and say, well, it's because you moved the capital.
Craig, you could vote, you can vote no, and then it'd just come up next meeting with Mike here. I mean, because two-two will continue. I mean, it's up to you.
All I'm saying is, if it's, if they're gonna, if we get mold on those greens next winter and the excuse is, is because we didn't do the loop, then I, I have a problem.
Well, it, would it, would it be an excuse or would it be fact? That's the difference. You have to.
We, we're not.
We have a greens loop.
We haven't had mold on those greens, even though we weren't doing the loop.
And we haven't had grass either. I've been here for twenty-four years.
Do we have mold this year on turtle?
You have, you, you always have a little bit of underlayment of algae. I assume that's what you're talking about. I mean, like I said.
It's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, guys. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta stop it eventually.
If it's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't wanna do it.
I, I would agree with you, I wouldn't do it at five hundred and fifty thousand either. I would say, let's leave it open or table or whatever, but let's get a real number.
We're trying to figure out a budget.
That's what I'm saying. Come back with the number.
Can we just make?
You're gonna come back with what?
I don't know, Ray, until they give it to me. I'm, I'm at the mercy of the, the contractors. I've been asking for it ever since we got the bid from deer run irrigation.
I'm, I'm not personally, I'm tired of spending a lot of money on the golf course.
I agree.
I agree.
And so is, and so is most of the people that I talk to. They can't believe how much money we spent.
We had, we had the mold on deer, didn't we? And we have a greens loop for the last three years. So I, you know, it's hard for me to figure out why we would have it on turtle if we don't do it. I mean, we have it and we got it.
Most of it's, the biggest issue is the water. I mean, you're, you're creating an issue by not watering your greens. I mean, you're creating an issue by not watering your greens right now. So what I'm going to do with Lou, what I'm going to send a guy with a hose and try to water slopes and do sprinklers. So it's going to cost us labor to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, we got to keep grass on our slopes during the dry season, which we've been in all summer. So, I mean...
It's not enough for too much, right? Yeah. Okay.
Time for moving it.
Huh?
I'll move it.
Let's move it one year and we'll hear back from them.
Okay.
And see what you have to say. But I got to tell you, I would personally, if you come back and want to do it in-house, I would not support that, personally. You've got enough things you've got to do with the golf course.
I agree.
All right, so Chris, we're going to move that 550 into 23, 24. Are we okay with everything else? The driving mat, I can tell you we can make it 40, if that helps. All right, Chris, change the driving mat from 55 to 40.
Well, let's, but just so you know, you're the only one that saw that quote, but that quote did not include any sort of border.
We still have to dig borders, which we would do with the 2500.
But it can definitely go down, but I just don't, I don't want you to go down that far and then...
All right, we'll leave it at 55 for now, that's fine. Is everything else okay for the golf course improvements?
Yes, sir.
How much riprap is there? Is there going to do all the ponds?
That's the rock. No, it's a five-year.
That's why I put it out for five years. So, like right now, I mean, yesterday we went out and pulled up all 5 and 14, you know, where it was washed out from the last storm we had. So I would take those areas right now that keep washing out and I would take and put the filter fabric down. And granted, you're going to chase it, but right now where the erosions happen, I mean, that's, it's probably about 10 loads of riprap. And what I did this year...
This 25 is?
Yes, sir. And what we did this year was two loops. So we can get quite a ways with 10 loads. And that's your fabric, and I still have a little bit of fabric left over.
Okay. Clubhouse and bathroom painting, column update, banquet partition, pro shop remodel.
No.
I didn't have that making it last meeting.
Huh?
I didn't have that making it last meeting.
Those...
That's what I needed.
Pro shop remodel for the time being is out.
Okay.
Okay. Following year. I got a question on this lease, and I know we're going to have a conversation at the next meeting on the equipment lease. Just briefly tell me, assuming we didn't do anything, changes. What is the difference between the two proposals?
Between deer and tour?
Yeah. Other than $4,000, I think. Right? One of them is $4,000 less than the other.
What are you talking about?
It's just tour versus John Deere.
Equipment-wise, it's the same thing?
Yes, sir. I have a problem.
So if I'm not mistaken, one of the leases was $17,000, correct?
John Deere was.
John Deere was $17,000. That's who we do business with now?
Yes.
So $17,000 times 12 is 204. And we have down 300. Oh, no, yeah, we do. We have down 300. So I can save us almost $100,000.
Yeah, next, that's the next, following year.
The next five years, correct?
That's correct. I don't know, I didn't put that number in.
I didn't put the 300 in either.
I think that's just a, when, as we were evaluating through that, I think it's just miscommunication when we're working through the district and before you change.
I'm not asking if it's, I'm just saying, is that correct? The number should be 204, 205, right? So we're going to change each of those 300s, Chris, to 205. So we'll pick up over, almost 400,000 there. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm not saying it wasn't a mistake, that's fine.
Right.
Okay. The rest of 23, 24, it's only two things, so it's the cart path and the riprap. I assume everybody's okay with that. I assume the following year, it's the same thing. We're all okay? In 25, 26, there is...
Range picker.
A range picker for 15.
China.
Range picker for 15. In 25, 26. That's when you think you're going to need it?
Right, that's, that's the expected lifespan.
Okay.
Yep.
And then you put in China. 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 That's for, we're getting all new dinnerware for the restaurant? Anybody have problems with 25, 26? Then we go to 26, 27. And basically, you're only asking for cart path, cart path repair and riprap.
At this time, yes.
So to summarize golf, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to take out the pro shop remodel for 15. We're going to move the green loops to 23, 24. And then we're going to take the equipment replacement down to 205 for each of the four years. Okay?
Well, the 205 for the lease, what was there to purchase?
So, right now, just to get everybody up to speed, what I've been working with, with Mr. Hurley was, I'm going to bring you guys a couple of options on it. And if, so if I bring the $17,000 down, you're still, we're still going to have the equipment that we currently have that we need to purchase. I can't eliminate equipment. I still need, the number of that $17,000 I already gave you, I already took one fairway unit off it, but I, I would like to purchase one off the current lease. The, I'm, and what I've drawn out right now is going to be like a $4,800,000 purchase with purchasing the gators that you currently have. They're offering them $1,600. But I'm going to give you a couple of different options on it, so at least we can look at it and come up with the best number is for a lease and...
Right. And we'll do that next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yeah? Right, but it's not 300. I mean, it's going to...
Correct, you're right.
Well below 300,000.
Yep.
The cart lease going from 207 and then two years because we...
So the reason...
Drop it down to 155.
The reason why that was estimated, so you got to remember, when we went from, we went from lead acid carts to lithium. So the lead acid carts weren't worth as much in this scenario as going through the next one. So if that plays out as that goes, then that, that's why it trends down. Because these carts will be worth more when we trade them in.
Okay, but...
One more thing on that. The way that we structured that lease, we didn't pay last year.
Correct.
Paid two, like, two years in a row. This is saying that we're going to pay for, you know, we leased it, we'll pay for three years.
Right. That was the other thing.
We'll just pay, we'll make a payment every year.
Yes.
Correct. And there's that aspect to it, too.
Okay. Any other questions on golf? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Chris, gentleman, we've got two to go, general and utility.
We'll start, start, just go at the general fund and really the big items is we have a network project just to link up the maintenance building, the water plant recreation office. It's kind of redoing the whole internet system there. And the second big item is the security camera. And I mentioned that 80%, 60% of the cameras that are on site right now don't work. And that's kind of a decision, you want the cameras or don't you? And it's expensive to put them in and they're expensive to maintain. We're really looking at, from a utility perspective, having those cameras at the water plants and wastewater plants is really mandatory with the regulatory agencies as part of Homeland Security operating those systems. But the utility side, we can take care of it. On the general fund side, where you have the cameras here in this building and the community center over at the golf course. And I know when they had that mat cut out, that was an issue too, because they said, well, you have a camera back there. I said, well, we do, but it doesn't work. So, but it's a big expenditure. And in cases where people say, oh, get the cameras, that's fine, but unless you can really identify a license plate in somebody's face in a high-definition camera, and if it's dark, then you can't use it to prosecute anybody. Or even on that situation with the mat, if you saw somebody walk by there about that same hour and the mat's missing, well, do you have a picture of them actually cutting it out and carrying it away? So, yeah. It kind of puts a false security in the same thing. Well, there's a white truck and it looks like him. Well, do you have the license plate and can you read what model truck it is? But they do offer a lot of people a sense of security. And that was a hard quote on that $45,000.
We put all these cameras up. Where is the, is there like a room that has, that captures all this? Or how's that work?
Yep.
Where is the room? I'm curious. Do we know?
So, right now, it's actually a software program that's on our computers. Like, I have access to all recreation cameras and district office cameras on my computer when they're working. It's a software program that's downloaded to our desktop. So you would open that up and it would give you access to view all of those cameras.
Okay.
So, and same, same thing. When it works, you have the ability to go back and see previous footage as well.
How long does the stuff stay on the system?
Not very long. I don't have an exact time period for that, I'm not sure, but it's not very long. Maybe, I mean, I've had to guess...
It's not more than 30 days. It's 30 days about the typical storage, so if something happens...
Oh, 30 days, I would think would be fine.
Yeah.
When you can access it, yeah. When they're, when they're working and when you can get that footage.
Okay. Thank you.
And one of the items, too, that we were talking about was, you know, Advent has asked us on several occasions if we want to contribute to their fitness center. You know, looking at like a 10-year contribution, I put in there $50,000 a year. Ariel has some numbers on what we would save by closing our fitness center. And in discussions with Advent, I told them one thing is they would have to provide a bridge facility there, basically taking our equipment and moving it up there and providing something for our residents while their planning and construction was ongoing. So as soon as we started that contribution to them, it would be like, they need something for our residents to be able to go up to. Of course, they would have to drive up there. And I will say this, the fitness center isn't used a lot. It's kind of like the pool. You have a dedicated group that comes in there in the morning and so others, but I don't think there's more than six or eight people a day that go in there.
So how much money do we save by closing it?
So, the way that I broke this out was, I actually did it in a three-year period. And I'm happy to share this with you all via email. I broke it out in three years for the reason being that the equipment cost isn't necessarily a cost that's every single year, but it is a big cost that we have to account for. So I did it between 2019, 2020, 2021. We included things such as cleaning supplies, wages for the hours that are spent cleaning the facility, fitness instructors, less the Aqua classes, because that's not necessarily something we group into fitness. We group any of the pool classes into pool, because that's something that's included with the pool membership as opposed to a fitness membership. Wages for cleaning the community center due to the fitness classes, equipment repairs and new equipment, monthly expenses including Comcast, Powers, Sirius XM and Redwire, which is the security company that does the doors. The only thing, like I said, that's not included on here that we weren't able to get a hard number for was insurance, whatever if cost is associated with insuring both that portion of the building and then the insurance we, you know, carry to be covered for liability. The number that I have on here is $106,918.
Excuse me. But you're, are, we're considering closing down the classes that are held in this building? The fitness classes?
If we get rid of the fitness center, then I would recommend that we do so, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Well, then you're talking more than six people, because I know yoga classes is full. I mean, they have a lot of people at yoga classes.
Yes, some of those classes are very full. Now, what...
During the season.
One of the things that we discussed with Advent are those yoga classes and the things of that nature. We said, look, we've got good instructors. We would ask that as part of this bridge program, they're allowed to continue teaching classes.
I thought the original conversation was just on closing the equipment room. The gym, whatever we call it.
And what we're looking at, too, is if they open the fitness center up there, it's total. It's fitness classes, yoga, they do all that up there. It doesn't matter. And, and I'm not sure, maybe I'm wrong, but when I've been chased out by the yoga people, there's like five people in here.
Only because it's summertime.
Okay.
And during, during season, we have exercise classes in here Monday, Wednesday and Monday, Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay.
Go on a seven, I mean, no, I think you're taking too much away from the residents.
With the residents, it's not taking it away, it's moving it.
He's just moving it.
Yeah, but you're moving it before you have to physically get in the car and ride over there.
You can go in your golf cart.
You can go there in your golf cart.
Unless it's raining.
So, like I said, I did break it out between the three years, just to give you an idea. The, the classes that, or the amount of money that we spend on fitness instructors, again, that's less Aqua, is 2019 was $7,000. 2020, we had a lot of classes offered, that was around $12,000. And 2021, it was $7,500. So that's why this particular section was included into this, because it is a pretty large cost.
I thought the original conversation was just about the equipment room. And that's how I'd like to proceed. When the hospital gets done with their whole facility, then we can have a conversation about moving these yoga classes.
That's fine. If that's, if that's the direction the board wants to go with that, we don't have an issue.
Let's hold on it.
When they're going to break ground?
Where is, where is they at on the funding?
That I...
They're about two years out.
They're two years out from breaking ground, right? So they're probably five, four, five years out from completing the, their, their building. So I would say, what you're telling me is, at most, we spend $120,000, $130,000 over a three-year period?
I would say that's probably...
If we're going to, if the intention was for us to break even on this deal, then $50,000 is overspending. I mean, that's what I would say, should be $30,000 a year, if we agree that that's what we want to do. Anybody?
It's a, it's a big, it's a big investment and we were just looking at, when it's in the ground, it will be a good asset for people.
Yes, it will be, it's...
If they provide the bridge and everything, I think we can give them $50,000.
Yeah, I'm in favor as long as we have a bridge, but I'm still waiting. Apparently, you guys have talked, but I haven't heard of what they're offering or anything. And I think, I would like to know a little more.
And they're still, I talked to them two weeks ago and they're still figuring out, trying to find space. Originally, they came back and said, well, we have one, two miles down the road. And I said, no, it has to be up at the hospital.
No, it's got to be here. It's got to be here.
And...
Here at, I'm at the hospital. I mean, because it's no farther for people live over there on, by you guys to go to the hospital than it is to here, so...
They're looking for a different facility?
Well, something on campus up there to have the weight room and that bridge facility, and more so the weight room and the gym.
Well, when I met with them, it was going to be a separate building. It's going to be on this side, so we can get there.
They have a building now, though, Beth. They have a fitness center working now, but it's not real, real big. But there is something there.
It's in the hospital.
Well, it's connected, Craig knows, Craig, you were there. Yeah, it's a rehab center, but that's what I think they have in mind.
It's on the first floor.
It's on the first floor and it's...
Of the hospital, right?
Of the, well...
As soon as you walk in.
Yeah, to the right.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's right.
Cardiac, it's a little cardiac.
We're raising, we're raising our dues and everything else across the board, which I've got, no problem. And we've been taken away from on this...
We're not taken away. It's being moved.
And how much do the...
Facility that is going to be...
Well, then are we going to destroy the...
World class, pardon?
Are we going to destroy the stuff?
No.
How much do the yoga people pay in, in that?
It's part of the membership, so they don't pay anything.
Part of the membership, the golf membership?
If you're a golf member, then you get that as, it's complimentary. If you are a fitness member, you pay, I think, as $125 plus tax for an annual membership and the fitness classes are included.
The conversation never was about that. The conversation was only about the exercise room.
Okay. Like I said, we're, we're used to working around the fitness classes in here. If it's the board's direction to keep them, then that's exactly what we'll do.
The question, all right, but the question on the table for today is, do we want to close the fitness room? And if so, when? Because I, I think that was our question. It had nothing to do with yoga or any of that kind of stuff. And how much do we want to give the hospital? The idea was to break even.
And that, unfortunately, that did, and that's my lack of direction, got dragged into the fitness center. And that, that, unfortunately, that did. And that's my lack of direction. Got dragged into the fitness center. I was looking at the cost to run in the overall program. And with it, with the intent of when they were fully open up there, they offer the exercise classes and, and those facilities. So, we wouldn't have them here and that would be part of the savings.
All right, let me ask this. And I don't want to push this, because we've got a lot of other priorities going on. Could we call the hospital and find out what fifty thousand dollars a year is going to get us? And then we can discuss it when they send that over.
Sure.
Until then, I think we do nothing.
So, basically like a sponsorship proposal with that, at that pledge amount, what would we get for this pledge amount? What would be your sponsorship package?
It sounds like you guys are okay with the fifty. I'm not, but you guys are okay with the fifty? Bev, you're okay with fifty?
Yeah.
I, I am due, but I, I'd like to.
We got three out of four that are okay with the fifty.
I'd like to know more information.
Yeah, we need, if we gave you fifty a year for four years or whatever it is, what do we get returned for that fifty? That would be the question. And when they get it back, give it to us and we'll discuss it.
And this is going to be the same thing. And I have an exercise class over there. It's still like a nine o'clock clock down, like I can't hear.
I, I can't guarantee that.
I mean, there's just too many.
Let's find out what, let's see what they say.
Yeah.
And we'll go from there. And for the time being, I guess we'll put a question mark or we'll leave it.
Yeah, just leave it there until we.
Until we have a better feeling. Okay, next. We'll keep going.
The other two were just physical and it was, we put, put in the, seal the parking lot and seal the maintenance of the parking lot.
You know, the parking lot thing, I, I, I forgot to say when Mike was here, they still have not finished what they started. Painting those, what do you call bumper things? Yellow. Half the parking lot is painted yellow and half of it's still not painted. And this has been going on for a long time.
Okay, I'll look at reprioritizing, because that's not a big deal to go up there and pressure wash those things out a season and lay it down and spray paint them or even just coat them with paint, but.
Well, for some reason, nobody's finished the job.
Yeah.
But that's, that's not done by golf, is it? That's probably done by us.
That's what our.
I thought Mike did it, though.
No, I.
Is that us? Well, if that's us, we should finish.
Probably us, because we do a lot of that stuff. They can't afford it, I guess.
I guess we can leave the ceiling until we get closer to it to see if we really need it.
I, I'm going to run back with it. On the cameras, is there certain places that we would like to need one, that we like having it out there at the driving range? To me, it's immaterial. So, if we drop some of these off, where can we get to?
Yeah, I'll look at that, because utilities would pay, obviously. It wouldn't come out of the general fund for the cameras, security, the facilities.
Are you talking about, I think he wants to know where you're going to put them, right?
Well, I'm saying we've got some, and this was replacing all of them, I assume.
Right.
Is there some that really don't need to be replaced?
There, there are some at the racket club. Watching the shuffleboard, the pool and the community center, probably so, because the outside and the activity here.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm, I guess.
I guess, based on what Craig's saying.
Might be able to reduce that amount.
Maybe you give us a list before you bid it out on where you're going to put them.
I just, there's sort of, like you said, there's really no good reason to put it at the driving range. You can't, you can't see who it is. Can't read anything.
Right.
So, just like, yeah, I have one out there, but so what?
We'll fine tune it. And going down to the next, the, the only thing on the capital really starting up is, you know, the playground renovation. That was moved and that grant's still active and it's still moving forward and we shouldn't.
What are we going to hear? This is getting ridiculous.
When that legislative meeting happened, is my understanding, my, I, from what I've heard, it could be July. We're, we've done literally everything we can do at this point. We have to wait for the state to have the meeting and allocate the funds for the FERD apps.
What, which company are we doing this with? Guardian? No, not Guardian. Who are we doing this with?
Well, Guardian helped us prepare the application, but the application's been submitted to the state.
Oh, so we're waiting.
Yeah, we, it was, it was submitted through the county. They had to be the ones to physically submit it on our behalf. We put the application together and now we just sit and wait for the state to do their part.
And we could get up to how much of this three fifty?
Two hundred, two hundred thousand. It's a, it's a fifty-fifty match. So, we, we put the two hundred, two hundred. So, it would be saying we would be putting two hundred towards the project and therefore would be getting two hundred for the project if we were awarded the full amount.
Okay. I guess one of the Bob's, equipment vehicle, you got ninety-five thousand, two of them. What are they?
Bob, come on up. Well, I think we're starting with security.
Yeah, security. You got two vehicles.
Well, the security truck, my, per Chris.
You want to sit?
Per Chris, I've made some contact with the Ford dealer and the current price of the truck right now is thirty-four, six, six, seven. Now that, there's a fifty-two-hundred incentive that we get by piggybacking the government price. So, we get fifty-two-hundred dollars right off the top. And then between now, what, Stuart told me between now and November, when the truck would be delivered, we would have to pay a four to seven percent value increase, which, which brings the truck to about twenty-nine, six. Now, that's all before they evaluate our trade on Friday or on Tuesday of next week. So, Tuesday of next week, Stuart's going to come here and make an evaluation of our truck and see what they'd give us in trade. And the pre, the pre quote, he told me, was actually rather well, because four-wheel drives are at a premium right now, even though they have a high mileage.
Okay, so this is, and this, this vehicle is going to be used for?
Security patrol.
Security patrol. So, what you're telling me is the most it's going to cost is thirty thousand?
Most. That's, well, that's the absolute most. Honestly, President Brooks, it would be without, with considering the trade, it might be considerably less.
So, we can change that from forty-five to thirty. What about this other vehicle down the road in twenty-five, twenty-six? Is that the same vehicle, same deal?
Yeah, that's just every two years they do a replacement because of the mileage on the vehicle. And if we're getting favorable pricing or if it's four to seven, you could probably bring that down to thirty-five.
If it's every two years, we, it's in the wrong year. Isn't it?
Yes.
It should be a year earlier. It should be in twenty-four, twenty-five and then twenty-six, twenty-seven, right?
And what's, what's the delivery delay on the truck?
November, we wouldn't see the truck before November.
What's that got to do with the other one? I'm not talking about, the first one I got, it's thirty thousand dollars. You're going to get it in November. You got another one down here for twenty-five and twenty-six. That's three years down the road. I'm saying, should it not be a year earlier is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think so.
If you're saying every two years, it should be a year earlier, right? So, let's add one in twenty-four and twenty-five. Let's say it goes up in price. It's going to be thirty-five thousand.
But then another one goes in.
And then we take, then wait, then we take away the fifty. But we add in another one the year after and we'll call it forty thousand. That way you have every other year.
We never know what the government concession is, though. The only thing issue with that, Mr. Brooks, is we never know what that government concession is going to be. Sometimes it could lower.
This is just a ballpark.
Got you. I understand.
If you have a different price.
Perfect, perfect.
I understand. Okay, so now you got three trucks in the next several years.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I guess the other Bob. A hundred, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of equipment over five years.
Well, I, I'm, good morning, Board. I'm Bob Brumpeld, manager for the Road and Drainage Department now, I guess, as well as code enforcement, but that's going to change. I'm sorry, I've gotten into this kind of late this year, but I do have some figures that have been in, from the past years. This year, I believe they had a hundred and thirty-seven, a hundred and thirty thousand scheduled prior to the new to what I have, the information that I've got here. As of this year, it's eighty-three or fifty-three thousand plus twelve thousand for a side mower attachment. So, it's about sixty-five thousand.
Right. Why does that fifty-three?
Well, the fifty-three, I'm not sure where that came from, because I wasn't involved in this process before a week or so ago. But I have some, some equipment that I would like to see that I think we need.
You know, this is unfair to you. When's the next?
No, I, I can present what I've got. I can't go year to year to year, but I can tell you what I could, what I would like to get for this.
Well, I need for that, I need you to sit down with Chris and plug it in.
Yeah, I think you need time to.
Well, we've talked about this year. I haven't got information.
This year it says fifty-three thousand. Do you know what that is?
Correct. I have that. I have
All right, what is that?
Equipment for this. First of all, we're supposed to trade in a zero-turn and an enclosed cab, three sixty Grounds Master. The total of those two pieces of equipment that were scheduled to trade in would be ninety-five hundred dollars. That will, we're getting a new one of those, each one, but that won't give us any kind of a backup at all. And these mowers are used every day. They're two, two different types of mowers. One's used for big areas like around the community center and right away of the roads. The other one's used for around the town hall, the boulevard. It's a smaller mower. It's, it's a little bit easier to handle. My, I would like to keep, instead of trading in those two pieces of equipment. One is the, the, the zero-turn is supposed to be three thousand dollars for the trade-in. It's a two thousand nineteen. The enclosed cab, we're supposed to get sixty-five hundred for that. That's a two thousand seventeen. I would like to keep both of those, which would take ninety-five hundred out of that fifty-three thousand. Another thing I would like to get is.
Wait, you lost me.
I'm confused.
You get it? You lost me.
Yeah.
You, you don't want to trade them in?
I do not want to trade them in. I would rather take that, that ninety-five hundred dollars that we're getting for the trade-in and, and pay that, so it would come out of the budget. But we haven't gotten that, those pieces of equipment yet.
Are they, are they paid for?
Yes, they're paid for.
So, then.
That's what they're allowing us for a trade-in. We, we've ordered, this is from last year's budget. We've, we've ordered these three pieces of equipment, which was a Vintrac edger, of enclosed cab, three sixty Grounds Master, as well as a zero-turn mower.
And that's for the fifty-three thousand?
No, this is from the previous budget. We haven't gotten this. No, we got one piece the other day.
They were ordered in October.
Yeah, they were ordered in October last year when the new budget went into effect and we haven't received them yet. The, the three sixty enclosed cab.
It's still in the capital or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, no, I'm lost.
If you take the nine thousand, you don't want to trade it in, what are you going to do with the fifty-three? I'm all.
Well, I want to take that out of the upcoming budget, because I'm thinking we're not going to get those pieces of equipment. So, we'll have those mowers on hand until they come in and we get the new equipment and they'll be exchanged for the we were, we were supposed to trade in four mowers, two three sixty enclosed cabs and two zero-turn mowers. Omar had a, a deal set up with, where they trade four mowers for two mowers. So, that doesn't leave us with any backup at all. And I'm not in favor of doing that.
What, what's, what's the fifty-three thousand for?
Well, that's what we have scheduled for our upcoming budget for twenty, twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three. Okay, that, the ninety-five hundred would come out of that, because we would not trade it in. We'd pay it out.
What are you going to buy?
The ninety-five hundred is on equipment we already own.
We already own it, but it was earmarked to be traded in. And that's the value they're going to give us for that trade-in.
But if you don't trade.
So, if we don't trade in, we have to pay for it.
If you don't trade it in, that raises the price.
That's correct. It raises the price.
Sixty-three goes up to sixty-two.
Right?
And that doesn't, no, that. Let me go on a different route here. We haven't paid for our equipment out of last year's budget yet, because we haven't received it.
Right.
Now, when we receive it, then we'll have to either trade in a piece of equipment for it or buy out that equipment.
Was that the deal that we did?
Well, what our deal, our original deal was to trade four p, four mowers, which was it was two, two Toro, three sixty Grounds Masters. One was an older one. It was two thousand nine and we were supposed to get five thousand dollars for that. The other one was a two thousand seventeen and we're supposed to get sixty-five hundred dollars for that. But we haven't purchased anything. We've gotten one mower, but we haven't paid for it yet.
Okay, if I understand you right, the equipment you're wanting to buy was committed to the purchase of the two that you're waiting on?
Correct. That's correct.
So.
So, what I want to do.
Quote that they got for the new, the equipment that he's waiting on, we, he'd have to give up these two machines. Now, he's wanting to spend the ninety-five hundred to retain those two pieces.
That's correct.
So, it goes up to sixty-two?
I'm sorry, I stated that. It's such a confusing.
Rolls over into twenty-two, twenty-three, yes.
I still like.
Well, it, do you have an additional fifty-three thousand that you're wanting to purchase in twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes, I do.
So, you're going to go up to sixty-two hundred dollars of needed equipment?
It'll be, I, I believe, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, the, we'll keep those two mowers. We have a mosquito fogger that's eight years old. It was just recalibrated a, a month ago. And the guy that does the calibrations said that it's going to start having problems. We're going to start having issues with it. And it's going to cost a lot more to repair and, and maintain than it is now. So, the new fogger is eighty-five hundred dollars. I would like to add that to it.
I would like. I can't do it this way. I'm sorry. I, I, if I can't see it, it's difficult to understand it. No offense.
Yeah, I understand.
I know you're trying and I know you're only been in the job for
Yeah.
A couple of days. I understand that. But I think, let's revisit this at the next meeting, just this one line of what Bob wants from equipment for roads and drainage, that five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and have something that we can look at so we can better understand. And you probably should go back to, I guess, twenty-one, twenty-two, since it seems to be a carryover.
It, it is a carryover, yes.
So, we can better understand it and we'll revisit this at the next meeting.
Sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll have it, we'll have a whole list.
I think it'll be easier that way.
Trade-in values. And it is difficult. So, we, we actually ordered that equipment in October.
Yeah.
And.
We need to see something on paper to.
I bought those two pieces that he's wanting to keep. We're committed to that trade.
That's correct.
Unless we pay the value.
Yeah.
All right, we'll revisit that in a couple of weeks.
I'll have better information for you next time.
Yeah, that's fine. I understand that. Not a problem.
How much history? Before we go, what is?
Oh, Bob, which Bob is this? Is this you?
Oh, yeah, that's the latest traffic.
You want to?
Do you want to, so we don't have to keep you guys here? Do you want to just tell us about that?
After a conversation with Chris, we did a study a short time ago. I don't remember, it was a month or so ago, a month and a half, we did one on Monza. And they still continued to complain about the traffic and the rate of speeds on Monza Drive. And we did a second traffic study. And if you look at it, there's some rates of speed that are pretty, pretty out of whack there. And on that stretch where we studied, there's two new families in there. Within the last three months, they both have, or they, both families have small children. And that area is pretty heavily populated as far as people walking the dogs in the morning and just generally exercising. The ladies that run in the morning run that route. It is a pretty populated foot traffic area of Monza Drive. We probably should consider it.
Is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
What, what do you think changed in three months? I mean, it's kind of.
Number one, though.
This is the third time we've done Monza.
Right. The, the first time they did it, they didn't like where we placed the speed sign. I thought it was a good plot spot, but they didn't like it. So, we moved it to the second time, this time that I remember. And we got a more accurate reading of the speeds in the center of the long stretch of straight there.
Okay.
Are we okay as far as stop signs and all that kind of stuff? Where you want to put it? Or are you going to touch base with the people who are concerned and?
Right. We, we would have, we would have, what, what we've done in the past is probably Chris and I and Bob would go out and evaluate the best spot to put it.
I don't have a problem with it, anybody?
No.
No.
I mean, go ahead with it.
Yeah, go ahead with it.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, one, one other question on the general fund. We, the pool, it's still there for two million dollars?
Yes, sir.
I'm probably the only one that is interested in doing, I mean, I, I will still think it's the right thing to do. You guys want to address that now or?
The, all I missed.
It's a big nut.
It's a big nut and with what we've got with the stormwater and the wastewater.
It's a big nut too.
Um, I'm not sure we're going to be able to look at doing it in twenty-four, twenty-five. I think it needs to be moved out myself, but.
I would agree.
What I'd like to, where's Ariel? I'd like to find out what kind of monies would be available if we were to do that.
Right.
You know, whether it's twenty percent, twenty-five percent, no monies.
Grant money.
Right, well, what, we were talking about that and also there may be an opportunity because with the new, uh, fitness center at Advent, they don't have a pool. So maybe we could co-op with them and have a lap in a pool and get them involved in it.
What, the hospital?
Yep. Just an idea.
I'm not so sure that I'm.
You allow, you allow people now?
I don't think I want to.
Yep.
Yeah, we do.
Well, we have time. It's, it's, you know.
Well, I'd, I'd like to leave it there for now, but I'd like to find out what kind of percent, what she thinks is available.
Okay.
Because actually, if we're going to actually try and do it then. You have to start now based on what's going on as far as how long it takes.
Yeah, it's probably two point five million now.
Well, if it gets any more expensive, it's probably going to go. To justification on the right. So if she could do that, that would be great. Otherwise, I'm good with the rest of this. How about you guys?
Yeah.
And I just have, I, I just have a design and permitting for the stormwater system in there. You know, it's in the budget, but if that SRF loans are, uh, approved. You just pay it upfront and then you get it reimbursed through the loan fund.
Seventy-five?
Yep, and that's about a, that's about a thirty-day process to do that. So you're out that cash flow for about thirty days till a check comes back.
Great.
Good, good.
Yeah, I didn't put that.
Should, should we even have that there then?
I didn't put that as we're going to, yeah, I didn't put that in like that. I only put it as an expense, not a offset.
Oh, so this should come out?
Uh. Yeah, theoretically that, that could come out.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would be part of like, uh, when you look at the utility fund. I didn't put any of that top stuff in. I could take the one, we could take the one seventy-five out and treat it as if it's, uh, listed, but not included.
Right.
Okay, we can do that. We just keep saving money everywhere.
Yeah, bundles.
Okay, general fund. Oh, we just did general fund. I'm sorry, utility fund.
Utility fund.
Now, on this sheet, just so you guys know, all that water and sewer operations, those top ARPA things, they're not in the totals because those we are going to get reimbursed.
Yes, right.
And that's the way we'll treat that one seventy-five. And actually, I guess we'll take the one seventy-five here. For design and permitting and treat that the same way.
Right, yeah, it's, it's all reimbursed costs.
Yeah, so that'll come out too.
And the, the big thing is here is I, I was bringing back the water meter replacement program and looking at financing it. Thank you, Bob and Bob. And financing that meter over, uh, over a ten-year period or possibly five. And we're also putting the principal and interest for that loan into the utility rate case that's coming in. Um, but, uh, we, we think it's a huge priority. You know, recently I just got a letter from. Department Agriculture and Consumer Services because we had a resident complain about our bill estimating. And we also have a report we have to do yearly to the Water Management District and they're asking for, okay, what's your per capita water use? How do your water tiers? Who's using what water? And we don't have any of that data accurately to provide to them. And we also look at being able to recover a lot of that. Expense through the efficiency of the meters. Um, because they're going to pick up a lot of low flows that our meter systems now don't even pick up. But, uh, and it's also huge on the customer service side because you have someone that goes, goes home north. And so they have a toilet leak or leak in their. Water bill where with the system like that, it could show you day to day and you could have alarm set. Oh, these people are using more or less water than they normally do and you can inform them. So, and, uh, we did move forward and it had, the board did approve the positions to get, uh, two meter readers and start reading more meters. Um, however, we recently hired one, but we lost one. So we're still at the same staff level and trying to hire people right now has been. Difficult at best.
On, on the meters, you got a hundred fifty, hundred fifty, and then you go down to one twenty-five. Is that the way it's going to run?
Yeah, the payment, payment would go down a little bit. There's a little more front-end cost to it, but then the payment would drop.
I mean, I'm personally, I'm okay with the meters, leaving them in till the next pass. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
What else you got?
Well, there's, there's nothing, uh, out of the usual. You know, we looked at buying another big truck next year, an F-two-fifty work truck. Um. Possibly a back truck only because if we have a sewer system or manhole that overflows, we can go back it up and take it over to the plant and move it versus calling in a contractor. And, uh, a trailer mounted work light and you look at it fifteen thousand dollars and that's really safety concern if we are out there and we have a crew on the side of the road at night having lights up, uh, to work.
Now, that one seventy-five comes out too, up in the design and permitting, right?
Yeah, what were you talking about? The manhole replacements just now?
Um, no, there are manhole replacements. Um. Yeah, that's.
That's in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty, oh, I'm sorry. Are you staying? I'm sorry. That's my fault.
And, and those are the large-scale manholes. It's not just going in and spray painting them. It's really doing, uh. And Joe, you want to comment on any of this for the back truck or?
I think, uh, I guess we can just highlight on the meters. Um, I was with a, um, well-respected, highly talked about. Uh, utility contractor in the state of Florida yesterday, uh, reliability. He said, he was claiming that they have one year now with no meter fails. Um, I know it's kind of hard to fathom, but he said they're fully recouping their money at this point and. Just a little. Window of. Improvement, I guess, for each meter would be, um. He said their average, he said he had, went to a customer's house. They were making, they were paying an average of twelve dollars a month on their water bill. It went up to forty-seven dollars a month. They fought it, fought it, fought it, went back every month. It was right. They were cooping, what is that, almost four times the amount? On, on one meter. So.
Already said, we're going to keep that in.
No, I know. I'm just kind of reiterating.
I know.
And he's also, he also, while he was here, started talking about some of these capital projects at the top. He's interested in, um. Quoting some of these, some of the major ones, uh, D O analyzers. Everything from water plant to sewer plant. So we're getting a head start on that as well, but, um. The vac truck at the bottom, that eight-hundred gallon equipment, we have really bad groundwater in the area. Obviously, we're. Working right now on our drainage projects. So, uh, with all the new construction, the, uh. Getting down to those main lines easier, uh, safer, more reliable. Um. I, I wish we could have got that this year. It didn't work out. Um, so yes, I would like to keep moving forward with getting that. We're trying to figure that out. Um. The, um. The trailer mounted work lights. I've personally been in seven, eight feet deep holes, main line. You're down there working on it. Right on the side of the pit, we have a, a work light. All it takes is that extension cable to be kicked and it's coming right down on top of us.
Okay.
Utility trucks, all that.
We'll let you see what you're doing.
Yeah, no, if not, we just wait it out. But, uh, utility trucks, uh, obviously we want to be staffed correctly. Um, right now we're already getting shorthanded on vehicles. Um, you're basically riding two to some trucks and that's not always the most efficient.
Sorry, we're getting shorthanded on vehicles?
Yes, sir. Uh, the number, number of people to the actual number of work trucks we have, we have one truck that's a long bed. I can't utilize that in the field. I can momentarily if you want to read heaters, but it has no.
So we have more, we need more trucks for the people we have?
I think we're close. If we wanted to put one person out. Right now, the guy on call that stationed at unit twenty-three sewer plant, he shares a truck with one of the guys in the field. So if that, with that being said, that truck is bouncing back and forth between employees. If that guy ever had to go out in, that technician ever had to go out in the field, he's hopping in with somebody else. So the efficiency is going down even with the number of guys that are going to come up in that, in that aspect of vehicles. So. Um, I'd like to have everybody, I know gators aren't efficient. They work for reading meters, but. It doesn't get your tools from point A to point B, things like that. And that's where we're going to start being is on gators by the end of this, once we get to, if we can stop our. Employee, the rest of the technicians and the operators, we don't have enough vehicles.
You don't have enough gators?
We have enough, I, we, we personally don't have enough gators, utility department, but we don't have enough vehicles. There's gators that we have, we had one gator for some reason in the back in the roads department. Uh, but that's only one gator and right now my part-timer is driving that. And on a rainy day, he's borrowing the mosquito sprayer rig to stay dry.
Don't you have like ten or eleven gators?
Not, not my department. Those, those are used, those.
Twenty-three or twenty-four between golf and district.
Utilities does, um, I think one is, was funded by utilities that they have.
Yeah, I, those are.
Twenty-three or twenty-four in that Southern Lake owns.
I think what happens is it, it pulls from the other departments. It makes them become unreliable and efficient. If we take their main source of transportation.
We'll see when Hurley presents his scenario.
Yeah, it's just my opinion, but I think, I don't think any of us knew there is. We had that many problems until Mr. Steele would come. Uh, so. I'm prepared to, to, to find out and to work with you to help you get you up to speed, but. You got to understand, we didn't know we were, at, at least I didn't, that we had the problems we had, so.
And on a positive note, um, if you come over to the administration room building and go into the back room, which previously was used for nothing, you'll see, uh. It's full of shelving now and getting stocked up with spare parts and fittings and brass and. Things that we needed to keep up with the growth and now it's all stored inside and in climate control. So, uh, everybody's real happy about that. The staff is and also the contractors we work with. Cause they know they don't have to drive to Winter Haven or Lakeland to go pick up some fittings to fix one of our pipes.
Yeah, it just needs overhoned and I, I think all of us are aware of that, so.
Okay, so twenty-two, twenty-three, we're good on?
Yes.
Twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yes.
I guess the only, well, manhole replacements. We've got a hundred thousand dollars in the other budget. You got, how much you got here? I may not have the right form.
I got two twenty.
You got two twenty for here. Chris, you and I had that conversation. What do you want to do about manhole replacements?
Oh, the, the manhole replacements are different from the lids and rings. Um, the manhole replacements, we are planning on doing one of the major ones, um, every year.
Yeah. Um, we talked about.
Budget, the hundred thousand in the budget is for just general maintenance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the two hundred and twenty is for what?
That's capital rebuilding the whole thing, rebuilding the whole.
Rebuilding them all?
Yeah.
Or rebuilding four of them, whatever it is?
We can do that in one year.
Depending on the prices fluctuating, yes. Yep, it's mainly the waiting time to get the manhole and, uh, increase the pricing.
Okay.
It's definitely gone up.
Elementary lift station?
Uh, that's the one we started on this year. We, um, we've quoted everything and. We might not be able to get the pit done in this hundred and forty thousand, but we're going to try to get a full replacement of that station. It's a lot small.
I'll come help you.
It's a lot smaller than the Tansas, the flows or.
So I think a hundred and forty thousand is okay?
It, it will rebuild. It might not replace the pit, but it will get new control panels, valves, valve box, pumps, rail system.
Is it going to fix it? Will it be fixed?
Yes, sir. That would be my, yes, yes. Other than the, the replacement of the pit will be original, so. The Tansas had greater problems.
The Tansas was three hundred and fifty thousand by the time we got done with it.
It was a big, it's a big station.
Piecemeal. I don't want this to be piecemeal. I want it fixed. We should get it fixed initially.
I understand that.
So if it's more than a hundred and forty, now would be the time to tell us.
I have to get a solid quote on changing out the pit on top of that all then.
Okay, is there any way to get, to check the pit out to see whether it needs to be replaced?
Can you repeat that one time, please? One more time, please. Can you repeat that, please?
I said, is there a way to examine? Prior to doing this work, whether the pit needs to be replaced?
Uh, during, during the sealing last year, um, when a Max Enviro came in, we built bypasses. The whole station was drained, dried and cleaned out. Uh, the bench in the bottom was good. The only issue that we had for the ceiling purpose was the invert, the ten-inch invert from the school. Had a, um, some drain, uh, leaking issues, which was causing the ground, the sediment come into that. And that has been remedied. Um, they were saying the pit looks in great shape after that, so.
Okay.
I'm going by what I was told.
So one forty is good. You're good enough.
I think we can rehab everything above the pit in that, that range.
Okay. You only need, in the next five years, you're only anticipating one genera, generator replacement?
Yes, that's the, that's the last of the small units. Um, and that's the well right beside the golf court, uh, tennis courts. Um, which is one of the main wells for the water plant.
Okay.
Everything else is going to be larger units, water plant, sewer plants and the restaurant. I'm sorry.
Any questions? Twenty-three, twenty-four? Twenty-four, twenty-five? Nothing, uh. The flushers for Tanglewood?
Yeah.
The, uh, what's this, uh, the middle school lift pump now? That's a first. I haven't seen that before.
We.
Which one?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand for the Hill Gussett Middle School Lift Pump. That's. On your equipment?
Uh, I believe that was one of the, uh, original bypass pumps I had been talking about since, um, the beginning of. I think twenty-twenty and it was shut down last year. And now it seems like it's going to. It's falling, it's still on the list for some reason, but it's going to fall under the wastewater bypass pump for masters, so.
I'm sorry, it's going to fall in where?
The bypass pumps for masters at the top on the capital projects wastewater.
For that ARPA money?
Yeah.
Oh, ARPA money.
Yeah.
So there's eighty-five.
So the eighty-five comes out?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll take the eighty-five out. What was the, what is this crane? For a hundred and five thousand? In twenty-five, twenty-six?
It's a crane truck, large scale, heavy duty that they used to pull pumps out of the lift stations. The one that we have now will be, uh, at the end of its service life.
We have one now. This is, it'll be, okay.
That's just, just a truck?
You know, pull it up and pull the pumps and pull heavy parts and fittings and that type of thing.
Okay.
Okay, twenty-five, twenty-six. Any other questions? Twenty-six, twenty-seven? Anybody?
Flushers.
And, and one of, one of the reasons some of those generators, you know, before you saw them in other budget sheets. Is with that ARPA money, instead of generators, we're going to the Thompson bypass pumps, um, which are more efficient than a generator. Generator only run, run at the two pumps and the lift station. Um, and also those Thompson bypass pumps, the power goes out, it keeps the sewer flowing. So instead of putting a generator in those installations, those four for the hospital and the schools and nursing home, they'll, they'll get those bypass pumps. So that's why the generators came out of the budget.
You wanted, you had a question on the flushing?
No. I know where we're at now.
Okay. Any other questions on utility?
Reasonable.
All right, well, just so basically, we're going to. Take the one seventy-five, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, add to the total, leave it listed. And we're going to take the eighty-five thousand out totally. And everything else stays the same. And then we'll see how it looks at the next passing. Anybody have any other questions about the capital plan or just anything else you want to deal with?
Nope.
Joey, you did a good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hit the ground running.